I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one ceremonial presentation this evening, and the Vice Mayor is going to handle that. Mr. Lee, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the best to the City Council. I have the pleasure of presenting and recognizing those people who serves on our commissions and committees and pretty much helps the city hum, representing the constituents of this city and helping the City Council effect their policies in a more thoughtful way. We thank you, everybody who came here to help us celebrate. We have about seven committees and commissions, and they make this place a really great place to live. As a small city, and we have a lot of challenges, but because of these committees and commissions, it makes it a lot better for us and all. We have about 58 commissioners and committee members, and they make decisions on policy. Some of them affect homeowners. They affect how our economic growth goes, how our parks are maintained, what parks we need, how beautiful our city is, and also our economic vitality. So they play crucial roles in advising the City Council. And really, the City Council should not be making decisions in a vacuum. And that's why these committees and commissions are very critical to our success. So I just want to take an opportunity. Tonight, we're taking the opportunities to honor all those commissioners and committees, and they should be honored almost every day, but we take the time to do it once a year. And in all, it represents about 70 years of service. So that's quite a bit. Tonight, fortunately, we have a few commission committees, committee members who cannot make it. And let's see, Eunice Donali could make it, and Kathleen Comora could not make it. But I'd like to invite Aline Lee and Akiko Sota to the podium, please. Aline and Akiko serve on the Sister City Committee. And the Sister City Committee is the official state sanction, actually, an international sanction committee that's required. We have two sister cities at this moment. Malta in Malta and Costa, is that right? Costa in Argentina, is that? La Serena, in Chile. Okay, well, something close. Obviously, I'll have to go visit. And I'll have to say, I came really close in visiting Malta. And I just want to present you, Aline Lee, with 10-year service pin. And, oop, this is Kathleen's, that's not yours. And Akiko Sota, thank you very much. Give them some recognition. Thank you very much. So these relationships are really important. It helps build our culture and our international standing. And we do have very close relationships with these cities. And many of the residents here have to support that because it can't be supported by the city itself. It has to be supported by a private citizen or a group of people in order to make it successful. So thank you very much for doing that. Currently, I understand that we're building relationship with Hanyu, Japan, and we've had a couple visits there. And they send people here. And also Kaiping, China. So that's very exciting. And then last May, was it? The mayor welcomed the president of Malta, Maurice Luis Colero Preca. I think Louis would be proud of the way I pronounced her name. And that was very exciting for us. She made two trips to Millbrae, and that was very, very special. Again, thank you to the Sister City Committee. Okay, we have, let's see, I missed that one. Let me see who's next. And we also recognize Jean-Joe. He recognized her five years on the planning commission. She also served as chair. Now, I'd like to invite Marlene McBride to the podium, please. Marlene is the chair of the seniors advisory committee, and she's been chair three years now?
Over 10,000 years.
10,000 years. Well, she only looks like she's done it for, what? Five years. So, and here's your five-year pin. And it's a very little token for all the work that you've done in the committee. It's really important because our senior population is one of the largest populations in Millbrae, and people don't know that. We have one of the largest percentage of seniors in all the cities and counties. So thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Now, we have, last but not least, we have a very important recognition. And this person has served the city 35 years as a treasurer, as a City Council member, as a mayor. And now he serves on the Plaington Recreation Commission. And I'd like to invite Mayor Dan Quigg up, please. So I just can't say how much. Dan still stays involved. He's part of Lions Club. He frequently donates to the community. And in his spare time, now he gets a chance to spend more time with his grandchildren. I don't know how he finds time for that. But we really appreciate what you've done, Dan. Can I have the City Council come here and take a picture with Dan? Give you 35 years. Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. But let's do one with Dan, and then we'll do it with everybody. Okay. So I just wanted, first, they wanted, so you almost got a five-year pin, but I said, hey, wait a minute. They can't give him a five-year pin. He's been here for a long time. He's given the city a lot. So we have to, so we decided we should do something more special for you.
I might get a 40.
Oh, make it 40, yes. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And I just want to say that we have another commendation for Donna Igbal, is that how? Igbal, she was 30 years on the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, and she couldn't be here, but we have a commendation for her. So if all of you can come up here and take a picture with the City Council, it'd be appreciated.
This podium is...
She can stand right here. I don't mean to tell you what to do. Just ask her to sit.
Everybody in?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lee. Our next item, agenda overview, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. Just real quick, I'd like to announce that we had a very successful movie night last Friday night. Great gathering of the community. We had food trucks, cotton candy, photo booths by MCTV, which were extremely popular, and a great turnout. Oh, and the library came with their bicycle and gave out free books, that's right.
100 free books they actually gave away.
So just a terrific night. The weather was in our favor and a great event. The next movie in the park, and they're always the third Friday of every month, August 17th, at Central Park, the movie will be Cars 3, and it's the night prior to the Lions Car Show. So we'll have food trucks and the same type of event, but also a few classic automobiles on Friday night. Just a few public safety announcements. We are aware that there's been a series of automobile burglaries on the 101 and 280 corridor. Some of these incidents have involved thieves who will walk by vehicles, see if the door is unlocked, and if it is, open the door and steal whatever they can quickly. So talking with the sheriff, he wanted to advise everyone, please keep their doors locked. Check your door handles, make sure that it is locked. And don't leave any valuables in your car. And if you have to, make sure that they're hidden from view. And always, as always, if you see any suspicious activity, please call 911 to report the incident. And also, as a reminder, the non-emergency line is 650-259-2300. Quick update from Central County Fire. Central County Fire has hired four new employees. All four of them will be rotated through our Millbrae fire stations. And we obviously wish them great success in their career. We also want to thank Battalion Chief Craig Latham, who was a battalion chief here in the city of Millbrae with Central County Fire. 32 years of service in fire, and last month, he retired. He's done a diligent job and a very outstanding job for fire service, so we wish him the best in his retirement. And then also, just an update. Central County Fire responded to 170 calls for service in the city of Millbrae, and 103 were for medical emergency services. So still continuing.
Over what period?
Last month, so the month of June. Now, update on the review of the council agenda this evening. Item number three is approval of the minutes for both March 27th and July 10th, 2018. Then there's public communication. On the consent calendar this evening, starting with item number five, we have a resolution accepting the 2017 American with Disabilities Act Interior Improvement Project as completed and final notice of completion for approval this evening. Item six is resolution ratifying a contract change order. This is change order number two to this contract for the agreement with Carex Engineering for a total contract cost of $222,143 and accepting the 2017 American with Disabilities Act Exterior Improvement Project as complete and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion with the San Mateo County Clerk's Office. Item number seven, we're recommending that you reject a motion. We only received one single bid for the 2018 pavement maintenance project. We'd like to go out and re-advertise that and see if we can get some more competitive bids. Item number eight also is to reject a motion. We received a single bid for fire station number 38, a backup generator. Same thing, we'd like to go out and re-note that and see if we can get a few more competitive bids for that project. Item number nine is to adopt a resolution authorizing the interim city manager designated to execute a professional services agreement with five engineering firms for on-call construction management services. The total aggregated amount for the five-year period not to exceed contracts of $1 million for each fiscal year with a base term for three consecutive fiscal years not to exceed over that period of $3 million. Item number 10 is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Millbrae and the San Francisco International Airport for water intertie. Item number 11 is an update and status report on the comprehensive classification and compensation study for all positions within the city of Millbrae. Item 12 is to move to approve the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee Utility Box Pilot Program Painting Project. In public hearing, we have one public hearing tonight. That's item number 13, and that's an ordinance amending Chapter 3.3, 5.1, and 10.05 of the Millbrae Municipal Code and adding Chapter 7.3 of the Millbrae Municipal Code to allow and provide for the regulation of short-term residential rentals and adopting a resolution establishing a fee for a short-term residential rental permit program. That's an action item. There's no items on existing business, and then moving to new business items. Item number 14, we need to designate a voting delegation of up to two alternates for the 2018 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Item number 15 is to consider adopting a resolution determining that in the public interest and that necessity demands, the restoration of the Millbrae Recreation Center, introduction of an ordinance ordering the submission of a proposition of incurring bonded debt to the qualified voters of the city of Millbrae at the general municipal election to be held on November 6, 2018 for the purpose of financing the restoration of the Millbrae Recreation Center. With that, Mayor, members of the council, that concludes the overview of the agenda tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions about the overview? Yeah, okay. Next item, approval of the minutes.
Mayor?
We had some minor changes.
Yes, staff has some minor changes that we can read off if that would be helpful first. Whatever your pleasure.
They're all pretty minor, unless anybody had any big ones? Can we move to approve with the minor changes? Is that all right with everyone? Okay. Is there a problem, Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to speak on that?
Certainly.
Go right ahead.
This City Council has a habit of making motions in second while council is still discussing. I find it very rude. It is what it is. It's been like this for two and a half years. I'd like to see it stop. Discussion should happen, then you make a motion in a section, then you have additional discussion. But in this case, they use it as a tool to shut people up. It is what it is.
Ms. Schneider, for your information, you've been able to speak. Now, for your information, Ms. Schneider, people can make the motion. No comments have been, I accept all comments. Many times, we'll take the motion down. It doesn't matter. Until the vote is taken, everyone can be heard and discussed. So we are still open to discussion on approval of the minutes. Ms. Oliva?
From my experience, the Robert Rules of Order by intent to make a motion or a second is never to be rude or stop discussion, but you have a motion and a second, and then discussion. So that's the process by which I was following.
So as I noted, yes, Mr. Vice Mayor Lee?
And we abide by Robert Rules of Order. Robert Rules of Order says you need to have a motion out there to have a discussion. There's nothing to discuss because there's nothing in motion.
Just as long as we're clear that everyone, if you own the council needs to make a comment, please just let me know, and I'd be happy to open it up for discussion. Right now, I just wanted to be clear that some minor modifications were made to both minutes. If anyone wants those read out, or we'll just accept the general modifications? Okay. I think we can do it with the exception, Mr. Lee, you made the motion. Will you accept the minor changes? Okay. And Ms. Oliva, you seconded. Were you okay with some minor changes? All right, then your votes, please.
Minutes of March 27th and also July 10th has been approved unanimously.
As amended.
Thank you.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Okay, no oral reports from the city committee or commissions. Now we'll open it up to public comments. This is the time when people can speak on items not on the agenda. You have three minutes to which, to do so, please watch the little lights at the podium. And it is also the views given during this time are announcing whatever events the City Council is not taking official positions on, but we encourage everyone to please speak. Our first speaker this evening, John Muniz. Good evening, Ms. Muniz.
Good evening. And now, on a lighter note, Mayor, Council, John Muniz, President of the Millbrae Historical Society. And I'm going to say it affectionately known as the Millbrae Hysterical Society. I wanted to remind everyone, the grand opening and dedication of the Millbrae Carriage House will take place on Saturday, August 4th, at the Carriage House in the rear of the Millbrae Museum. Commencement starts at 10:00 sharp. The parking lot in front of the Carriage House will be closed to traffic. Central Fire will be there with an apparatus. The San Mateo County Sheriff's will be there with their armored vehicle. Millbrae Machines Car Show will have vehicles there. The Millbrae Library will be represented, and I also hope Group Four will be there with their displays for the community center construction. The San Francisco Banjo Band will play for two hours starting at 11:00. We'll have free popcorn and soft drinks. You will be able to see in the Carriage House exhibits that have never before seen. We have the only color photographs, not photoshopped or colorized, of the Mills Mansion. And you'll be shocked to see how beautiful that was at the time in the late '40s. The Millbrae Carriage House was fully funded by the Millbrae Historical Society. We now have three museums within the city limits of Millbrae. Two are over 110 years old. The Millbrae Museum, built in 1898, opened from 12 to 4 on Saturday. And the Millbrae Southern Pacific Railroad Museum, built in 1907, located on California Merchant Drive just south of the Bart Station, opened from 10 to 2 on Saturday. Our mission at the Millbrae Historical Society is to provide continuing and contemporary leadership for broad-based community understanding and appreciation of historical values, social, cultural, technological, and educational that relate to current and future community improvements and interests in Millbrae. Thank you so much. I have flyers here. You want some flyers?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Muniz. Our next speaker, the Honorable Marge Colapietro.
Mayor, you'll notice I have two different speakers on two different topics that you have there. So is that my time?
Yeah.
That wasn't counted. That shouldn't be counted. Okay. Good evening. During the past few days, I've read some seemingly outrageous posts on the Nextdoor net site. Specifically, the cost of Big Belly trash containers and the painting of the Sun logo on the street at the Broadway and Hillcrest intersection. The Nextdoor posted cited a cost of $50,000 for each project. Needless to say, there was an overwhelming negative response from Nextdoor readers. Regarding the cost of the Big Belly trash compactors, the cost was $3,500 for each one, not $50,000, as stated. We have several of these throughout our downtown in addition to the standard trash receptacles. The Big Belly containers are solar-powered, so they can automatically compact the contents as they fill up, resulting in cost savings because instead of South San Francisco scavenger, picking up three times a week, it's reduced to one time per week. Sounds like a smart investment to me. Regarding the painting of the Sun logo, that project was a very small portion of the broader project for our downtown improvement that included concrete sidewalk improvements, bike racks, benches, planter containers, decorative enclosures around the newspaper rack, festoon lights over the street on the intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest, new streetlights. To say that $50,000 was to pay for the Sun logo is very wrong and misleading and unnecessarily riles up our residents and other readers of Nextdoor. This kind of inaccurate posting of information leads to angst and mistrust within our community. Pretty good bang for our buck. To read a staff report that indicates estimates without waiting to see actual costs at project end is extremely reprehensible and irresponsible. If one wishes to say something, then practice due diligence always. Carefully research and get the facts before jumping to conclusions. Thank you.
Go on, continue. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Now my blood pressure has lowered to normal. I read it, and I just went through the roof. All right. Good evening again. The season for politics and candidate campaigning has begun. I want to let all candidates and their supporters know that there are rules that govern both aspects. There are activities that are allowed and not allowed. Any good candidate should know enough prior to assuming campaign activities about what they may and should not do. An excellent reference for candidates and behavior relative to media outreach can be found in thorough detail on the Nextdoor website. I hope that all candidates for the November 6th general election will act responsibly, factually, and with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colapietro. Mr. Barrilera, nice to see you.
Thank you. Well, on September 18th, 12 years ago, a date that will live in infamy, you started your red light camera program. And for the last four years, I've been asking you for a radar study. That is, not a radar study, an engineering and traffic study. The radar study has been presented as proof of the survey, and no substitutes can be offered in court legally. This is by law. And you've been doing it, and so has San Mateo. I want to thank you for finally, after asking for it for the last four years, presenting me with an engineering and traffic survey. It's dated 2016. I've been asking for it since 2014. You were supposed to have it all the way back 12 years ago at the beginning because it serves a couple of important purposes. One, that you have a reason to put the lights in in the first place. And secondly, that it determines the duration of the yellow light. The speed limit is determined by the survey. So the speed limit determines the duration of the yellow light. So if there's no survey, there's no speed limit, no accurate speed limit, and no accurate yellow light. So I want to thank you for this. Jaime Rodriguez did an excellent job on the survey. Where the hell was it? You know, does anybody else in the room think it's peculiar that we get this thing a little late? The man did a beautiful job on the survey. It should have been done 12 years ago. How many people have gotten tickets, what I consider illegally, because the survey was not in place? And you've been substituting this. A little chart, which is a radar study. The survey is 43 pages, not one page. And by the way, I had to pay 14 bucks for it. Does that mean that, does that mean that every defendant who goes to court and says, "I want a survey," has to pay $14 in addition to the $490 for the ticket? Something is really amiss here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrilera. Wynne? Wynne Gershich. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wynne Gershich, and I was walking up the streets of Millbrae on Saturday, and you had your little posters out to run for the cure of cancer on the 22nd of September, and they announced it last City Council meeting. And what's really funny is that the people really need to be running down to the City Council and telling their City Council not to put chloramine in the drinking water. What causes cancer? Chloramine, ammonia, and bleach. And you all let your City Council put that garbage in your water. So if chlorine causes breast cancer, bladder cancer, colon cancer, and reproduction malfunction, and you add ammonia to strengthen it and make it more toxic when you can't even breathe it, they have to wear a gas mask at the water company, and you think it's okay. And you'd rather run for the cure of cancer. But the funny part about it is, what causes cancer? Chemicals, right? Chemicals and radiation. And what are they putting in the drinking water? So when you get cancer, what do they treat you with? Chemicals and radiation. And after you get the cure, if it might stop it for a while, you're continuing to drink poison in your drinking water. So when your cancer comes back in revenge, and you wonder why, guess what? You can't cure cancer when you continue to drink water with poison in it. So if you were smart, I would think that you would try to use ozonization, microfiltration, ultraviolet lights. You're paying a fortune for your water here in Millbrae. They should be replacing the water in sewer lines using alternative technology because you pay water in this city like liquid gold, and you deserve the best water of all. But I also met this lady, I went to this lady's house, and she's at the Magnolia. And this is a friend of mine. She's 101 years old. And I cut her hair on Saturday. I don't have any more clients. I don't do hair anymore, except her. I will do her hair until she dies. And she was upset about Trump. And I told her, I said, you know she's Jewish. And I told her, we need to remember the Holocaust, and I'm going to play something for you while I'm cutting your hair. So what I played for her was this kitty witherman. It says Hitler's rise to power. And what she's doing, and everybody should check this out. This is the most important speech you will ever hear. She's comparing America to socialist Hitler, socialist Chairman Mao, and socialist Stalin. She's talking about how Hitler had a nationalized healthcare like Obama wanted. They had a nationalized ID card like we're doing in the DMV right now. They had a nationalized ID card, like we're doing in the DMV right now, and how they have common core education in the schools, how they want both women and men to work so that your kid is being taken care of from preschool all the way up, so they could be in doctrine with the government rhetoric for the New World Order. And this is probably the most important thing. This lady is from Austria, and she said that the people in Austria voted to be part of Hitler's regime, because she didn't know what was happening. But at the end of the speech, she said, "You know, Hitler registered everybody's guns, and they wanted more gun control, and they took all the guns away." And she said, "When they took all the rights away from the Austrians," she said, "If we had the guns, we'd fight like heck to keep our rights." And that's why I want you to look this up. Her name is Kitty Witherman, Hitler's rise to power. And I'm also going to put this on public records so that you can also check it out.
Thank you. Okay, that was my final public speaker slip. We now have the consent calendar. Questions? Anyone? I had, I had a couple. As we approach 5, 6, and 9, I just had a couple of quick questions. So if you wouldn't mind pulling those. That would leave, yeah, 5, 6 together. So we have then 7, 8, 10, and 11. Any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Council Vice Mayor Lee, second by Councilmember Oliva. Your votes, please. Yes.
My motion. It does not work.
Okay, let's try this, and then have her test it again. So is that okay?
It doesn't matter. I never make the motions or seconds, so let's just keep on going. I already voted.
Okay. No, 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 hold on. Just take this vote, and then clear the board, and let's have her try it again, because you're going to have to get that fixed. So.
Consent items 7, 8, 10, and 11 are, and 12 are approved unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, now clear the board, please. Okay, can we get that, can we get that looked at? Okay. Is that all right? Okay, I just, on items 5 and 6, which deal with the ADA improvements, we received an email. It would be nice to get a more detailed list of what is being approached. I mean, I can look around. I see these lovely signs, the exit for the hearing impaired, and the automatic doors, and all of that. So if we could, I understand this was to be done to all the public, the city buildings, greatly appreciated. So if we could just have a little more detail, and people get used to what the costs generally are, because these items are very expensive, it would be helpful. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I'm very confused. We're talking about an issue before a motion and a second has been made. Aren't we supposed to have a motion in a second before discussion?
Well, I just, I didn't ask for a vote yet, but I'm, had questions, so I'm bringing them up.
I don't have a problem with it, this format, but this is not how we typically do things in Milbrae. So one way or the other.
Duly noted, Ms. Schneider. Ms. Key, so in the future?
Of course. Would you like me to just do a quick roundup on?
Nah, we can't have a long night. If you wouldn't mind posting that, if you have those items, that'd be great to expand on the report. Thank you. Okay, those are the only questions I had on 5 and 6, so I'd be happy to move approval of both those items at this point.
I didn't hear the discussion, so can you?
Oh, my discussion was if he could provide further detail online as to what improvements were made, a little more in detail, that would be helpful, and people can actually see the costs of these things, that you've got the signs there, the buttons. I know the report went into great detail on the cement issue, but the other items, it would be helpful.
Definitely.
Okay. Ms. Schneider made the second. Your votes on items 5 and 6, please.
Consent items number 5 and 6 has been passed unanimously. Thank you.
Great. My only question on item 9, which was an adoption of a resolution regarding executive professional services, five engineering firms. A concern we get from many constituents is that we bring in outsiders to help us with the workload, but they don't always have a comprehension of city buildings or neighborhoods, and they are either purely going off the code or invoking codes that we may not even actually have. So I ask that when we bring in these outsiders to help with the workload, that's great, but they really need to be attentive to the people trying to get their permits and trying to get projects approved, because there's a lot of frustration. I think probably every council member up here has gotten a call from constituents that, why all of a sudden, I don't know this person? It really takes the feeling out of working with City Hall, and we want people to feel comfortable. We encourage everyone to get their permits, of course, but it shouldn't be a bad experience. So if this is your project, and you're bringing these people in, a little more attentiveness, having them drive around the city, see what our neighborhoods look like, and getting things done, instead of just saying no to people, would be very helpful to everybody who's trying to get a permit, because it's always hard, and they're expensive on top of that. Yes, Vice Mayor Lee?
I agree with that, but I also believe that part of the service is on-call services. For instance, the time when we had those eight water main breaks, there was just no way our city was going to.
You were the mayor, and five pipes broke? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Couldn't have taken care of it before I became mayor. It's okay. Anyway, so, yeah, so that's, that's kind of the things that also this contract calls for, I believe, those times when we don't have the resources to cover a catastrophic event.
I just want to clarify one thing. The on-call services contract that we have in front of you tonight is primarily for construction management, and those are related to infrastructure projects.
My apologies. I'll move approval.
But Mayor, we hear you loud and clear on that message.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9, your votes, please.
Item 9 has been approved unanimously. Thank you.
Ms. Casman, do we need to take a vote to open a public hearing?
Yes. Why don't you do that?
Okay. Could you clear the board, please? Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lee, a second by Councilmember Oliva, to open the public hearing on the ordinance amending chapters throughout on short-term rentals.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, I'd like to.
Wait a minute. She has, she has to announce the vote.
Public hearing has been open, approved unanimously. Thank you.
We don't usually do that.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yes, Mr. Williams?
I would like to introduce Mr. Tom Mattelena, our acting community development director for the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Pappen, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. As, as intercity manager, Mr. Williams had said, this is on our draft short-term residential rental ordinance. We had come before you, before taking this to the planning commission, for our normal process for it to go before the planning commission, and then come to council. Tonight, I'll be walking you through sort of how we got there, what the process was, and some of this you may have seen before, and I'll kind of just describe to you the changes that were made in the planning commission recommendation. So, that being said, talk a little bit about the overview. Basically, we don't know how many, but basically, as you do know, that short-term residential rentals are currently banned in Milbrae. We do know that they are operating, though. It's obvious that they are happening. There was an incident that had come to the city's attention, I think, that precipitated the urgency for us to bring this forward. It's been estimated that there are in the neighborhood of 200 of these in the city. We really don't know. I did see some correspondence from Airbnb where they had mentioned that they have 70 of them. So it's an unknown number, but our goal or hope is, is that if we do have this adopted, if we do get this ordinance, it'll give us a little more ability to better manage and what we have, and then to better enforce the policy we have in the books. And so we need to really address this within the city. It's creating some issues in residential neighborhoods. These, this type of a use perhaps doesn't really fit the look and the feel of single-family residents or neighborhoods. And so, given the lack of available information on these units and appropriate policy in place, we feel that enforcement has been a little bit hampered, and that having a policy now in place, while it essentially legalizes it, in essence, what it does is it gives us tools for our code enforcement officers, as well as our, our police force, to, to better be able to deal with disturbances or incidents when they become, when they arise. And also, we, it addressed really some of the concerns of the community, you know, some of the feedback that we've had from residences or people that have brought this to our attention, residents, I meant, that the policy itself, I think, is, was crafted to address their concerns, and then at the same time, give us that enforcement mechanisms that we feel are appropriate. So the goal is really to try to address this complex issue where it's the square peg, round hole sort of concept, where you're trying to come up with a policy that is allowing a use that doesn't have a great fit, however it's occurring, and sort of times are changing. And so we're trying to put together a policy that sort of fits into that context, and helps us with, like I said, land use policy and enforcement. It will, if this is adopted or approved, we will have a permitting process. And so, of those that want to operate a residential, short-term residential rental, would come to the city, to our community development department, they would apply, and that it would be at the director's discretion as to whether or not they got a permit, if they met the particular requirements, and we're looking at sort of health and safety concerns. We have the ability to basically do inspections. We have, we'll have a list that's generated, so there's a number of things that we will do that will help us better understand what's out there. And to some degree, I think that we can say that establishing this process for, for the short-term residential rentals will preserve some of the residential character of neighborhoods. It'll also create an avenue for us to, essentially, we hope to recoup prior transit occupancy tax revenues, as well as future, to collect future transit occupancy tax revenues as well. I mentioned about the peace officers and the additional tools. And then the last one on this particular slide is, is that, I'll talk a little bit later on about what we talk, what we call it, either hosted or non-hosted. There's a little teeny bit of confusion about that definition that I want to try to clarify for the, for our public, as well as the council tonight. But essentially, it's, what was it? The idea is, is that, you know, we have a rule that you have to be, it has to be your primary residence. And the goal of that is, is to really to try to preclude individuals or groups of folks to buy properties, to own them, but just to use them as, as these investment properties or investment vehicles by utilizing services such as Airbnb, or HomeAway, or whatever it might be. When it described the, the non-hosted version, it's designed such that it doesn't allow that here. That's the intent, is that people would not be able to buy a home, not live there, and utilize it just to rent out as a short-term rental. And so as far as what type of units can be, basically, they can be, they're allowed as an accessory use in our residential districts with this particular policy, but only single-family homes, units in duplexes, triplexes, or multifamily dwellings, and accessory units may be rented either whole or in part, but essentially, no commercial structures, no non-residential structures. They must be primary residents, they must be the primary residents of the lesore. That's the host or non-hosted definition, really. So if you are hosted, you live there. You basically either own the home, or you rent the home, you live there all year long, and let's say you have three or four bedrooms, you live in one, and you want to rent out, make some extra, make some extra income. You're on-site all the time. It's your home. That's hosted. Non-hosted means that it's also your primary residence, and so you own it, you're a tenant, but you live there. That's your property where you live. You sleep there 265 nights a year, 100 nights a year maximum, you would be allowed to, to lease it out, to utilize a service for short-term residential rentals, if you pass the requirements that you were able to get, you know, get a permit from the city, and you meet the definition of the residency requirement. But essentially, then, that's like an example of, like teachers are somebody, you know, that let's say has a lot of leave, they have time off throughout the summer or whatnot where they're gone, they want to make extra income. It's designed to allow folks to be able to do that. I think I mentioned there that it's capped at 100, that 265 means that it's capped at 100 nights per year. 265, that's the example. So I mentioned we have a permitting process we like to put in place. On this permitting process, we go through the community development department. We have what we would call a short-term residential rental permit. That was included as one of the attachments to your packet tonight, was the application that we proposed to utilize. Also, we were proposing sort of a fee to be cautious with Prop 218, I believe it is. So we, essentially, we'd be asking for a $100 fee for them to apply, as well as cost recovery on the inspection side. It also requires a business license. They have to pay a business license fee with the city, and they'd have to register, do a transient occupancy tax registration with us. As far as some of the enforcement mechanisms that I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, we'll touch on here as well, is that we have, we're going to have a list of essentially who, what these units are. So if they come and apply with us, we'll have a registry list. Also, for hosted units, we would require that there is one agent that's available 24 hours a day, that can be on-site within an hour, should there be a disturbance. For the non-hosted, we're requiring that they have an agent and, what do you call it?
Alternate?
Alternate, there you go. I was looking for a different term, but alternate is the term I'm looking for. So they have an agent alternate for the non-hosted. And then also, the ordinance itself gives the director of the community department the discretion to basically to revoke a residential rental permit, whether, you know, whether we find something where it's detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or if they have any kind of repeated violations, or don't pay the TOT. I mentioned just touched on the residential registry. So basically, the city will create and maintain a citywide registry, and that will be of all the residential rentals, their agents, and contact information. We do intend on making this available to the public. And then also, we have basically spelled out that once this occurs, we would do noticing. So we do typical noticing in our division when we have a public hearing or something goes our planning commission, we typically will notice within 300 feet of the property. In this particular case, we said we would do 500 feet. So when people get a permit, we would go do a query, and basically, all properties, as a crow flies, within 500 feet, would then get a notice, alerting them that that particular use would now be occurring near them. So as far as some of the rules that we have as far as operations, I talked about hosted, non-hosted, tried to give a definition for that. Going into some of the occupancy, basically, what we've allowed for is two people per bedroom during the daytime, then you can, two people per bedroom plus, plus two would be your maximum occupants you could have during the night, and then during the daytime, it's that number times two, double that number. For studios, we did make a modification. I'll touch a little bit later on with some minor modifications that were made. It was brought to our attention by one of our planning commissioners that we needed to look at the definition for studio, and that maybe there would be too many people there, we agreed. And so the definition of a studio is really, is zero. So you just get the plus two. So it's a, it's not considered a bedroom. Parking was a, has been an interesting sort of discussion with this, and parking, of course, is a challenge with land use in general, and these stay in age, within fill, and this particular use. We struggled, quite frankly, with, with a reasonable mechanism by which we felt was appropriate and fair. With that being said, what we came up with is that essentially, if you are going to lease out a room, or X number of rooms, and you have X number of guests with vehicles, those vehicles have to be accommodated on-site. So you can only have enough people there to have them, that be there, park on-site. You as a homeowner, though, of course, if you have more than one vehicle, or if things in your garage, wherever your situation might be, the homeowner would be the one having to have the cars on the street. May or may not be better, of course, where there's cars on the street, that's understood. However, the, the premise is, or the theory is, is that it's maybe more palatable or better for neighbors in the community around them. If you see your neighbor that's parking somewhere, you know that person can speak with them versus people that come and go that you don't know is parking out there. Is sort of the premise, or how we felt it was more, let's say, more appropriate, some of the other options we were looking at. As far as like corporate events, or weddings, that kind of stuff, they're, they'll be prohibited. The ordinance would not allow that. That would not be. The ordinance would not allow that, that would not be, not be in available use in conjunction with your residential short-term rental. As far as our transient occupancy tax, this is one of the sort of side benefits, of course, of trying to regulate this particular use in town. The revenue that we have estimated for this, again, this is, we did a calculation that was on that 200 rooms, on a rack night, an average, let's say, room rate per night, and X number of nights per year, and then the TOT that we would get from that. So we estimated that at approximately 600,000 per year, have to see how that turns out. And that, we would also have basically increased reporting requirements that we would get for hotel operators, including the short-term residential rental operators. And then the idea that I think we talked about during the approval of our budget for fiscal year 1819, is that the generated revenues that we get from this program, hopefully, will enable us to hire additional code enforcement staff, and to support that staff over time. And that is, the idea with that is, that will give us additional manpower to sort of look at, to take care of other code enforcement issues that happen citywide. Sort of have some good news to report, there was, I think, one of the things that we had spoken of a few times at prior council meetings was, we refer to the public, or some of our constituents, about particular rentals that were causing consternation in particular portions of the city. I think we had four of them that we have taken a look at, and I would like to report that code enforcement has gone out there. I'd say that we've gotten good compliance, and it's been a receptive or positive result of the action that we took. So it's been pretty well received, I would say.
I don't know about that, we got some of those people still in the audience.
We felt that way.
We'll see.
Yeah, more to come. And so, and the idea is with that too, is of course, now, we have, right now, we currently have a half-time code enforcement officer at the city. If we have a full-time code enforcement officer, we will be able to, you know, to take care of more, and we'll be able to have more with additional staff, regulate better with additional Some of this stuff, I think I've already spoken of, I think I've kind of jumped to the gun, but I'll kind of touch it quickly here. Of course, we have a better understanding where the units are, you know, now, when there's an incident or disturbance, they might be going somewhere, not knowing exactly where they're going, or what the issue might be. With this, we have a much better idea and address and contact list, of course, for those that should meet them with, at the property within an hour, in case of an incident. And this is a typo here I have, the second to last bullet point actually was modified. So, we had heard some concern, I think Airbnb has given us some, some information that they felt that that policy might have been too strong, and working with our police force and the chief of the Millbrae Police Bureau, it was determined that really, the language that we had in there, that you had seen at the planning commission, it seemed prior, it might have been a bit overreaching, and it might have just gone a little too far, and maybe.
What does it say? We can't really, I can't see it from here.
Oh, read it to you. Authorized agents.
You have to go to the mic, sorry.
All right, that's a comment here, sorry, this isn't working here. Authorized agents are required to allow officers to access a unit where the officer reasonably suspects illegal activity, including violation of the operating restrictions. And so, essentially, I don't know if I can describe the exact language, I know Jared with our Hanson Bridge Legal Team who put that together for us, but in essence, it softened it, it made it such that, I think that it's, our understanding is that they still feel they have the ability to police it appropriately, and that this might have just been something that was not as conducive to the public eye. And then also, the lessors are liable for violations of the operating restrictions by their guests, so you know, if you own the home and you lease it out, and you're allowing them to utilize your home as a short-term residential rental, and we do require the owner's signature, by the way, not, not a tenant, that they be responsible for the So moving on to our recommendation by our planning commission, so, we took this to the planning commission, and at their, at our planning commission meeting, essentially, the planning commission adopted or approved the required change or amendments to our zoning ordinance, and they have also recommended essentially that, that the, you know, the, that the city council approve the short-term residential rental ordinance as it was recommended by staff. And so, what I mean by that is that they didn't actually make any changes. There was quite a bit of discussion, I have a slide here that talks about what some of the comments were, but those comments were not incorporated into the actual motion itself, and so, the motion was made to approve it as staff had brought it forward. And then also, we have a summary on attachment five to your staff report that you may have seen, you will notice that we have a summary of both the public comments, talks about what we received from Airbnb, as well as our planning commissioners. And I know that we typically, typically, we would not do this, typically, we want to only really bring forward what our recommendation was, and here, this says planning commission comments, it might be more appropriately characterized as planning commissioner comments, but essentially, this is some of the flavor of what the comments that we had received from our planning commissioners were throughout the discussion itself. One of which was, one thing we had looked at and weren't, didn't, weren't able to come up with a good solution for, which was the first bullet point, which was allowing the non-hosted units would not be allowed in the R1, or R1, so basically, R1 districts. It was moving about, we couldn't come up with a way to sort of police, or to appropriately Here, one of the, the fourth, the fourth bullet point that you would see, if you could read this, the small typing here, was about the zero bedroom, so for the studio, that was something that, that was brought up, I believe, by Planning Commissioner Davis, and it was, it was something that we felt was very appropriate, and we needed to do. Planning commissioners did talk about parking, though. They, their comment was that all, all the parking should be accommodated on-site, a little bit different than, than the way that it's currently crafted in the ordinance. And as we all know, enforceability is a concern, I mean, even with, even with the new ordinance in place, it's, you know, enforceability still can be an issue. And then lastly, that smoking should be prohibited, all short-term residential rentals. With that being said, I would be happy to take any comments, thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
We've opened the public hearing, so how does that work? I have several letters here, I'd just like to acknowledge that they will become a part of the record right now. I have a letter from Sandra and Fred Mangold, which means you still have a problem, because they're explaining one in their neighborhood. Let's, this is Matt Middlebrook from Airbnb, Paul Larson, and Jean Jo. So these letters will become a portion of the record. I have several speaker slips. So is the council want to make some comments first? Vice Mayor Lee, start, and then Ms. Schneider?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the audience, but also want to see if there's clarification on, on the ordinance. It says here, on page, let's see. Attachment one, part B.
Attachment one, and I'm sorry.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
Part B, attachment one.
Yeah, but there's a code section you got to.
Yeah, okay, hang on a second. It's 7.30.070, short-term rent, residential rental permits. And then, let me know when you get there. E.
B or E?
B. B as in boy.
30.070?
That's right, 70, 30.70, yeah, 070.
And your question?
Part B, number six, weddings, corporate events, commercial functions, and any other similar events which have the potential to cause traffic, parking noise, other problems. I, I, I think you, shouldn't that, let's see, shouldn't that be a revenue-based activities? I think you should try to work in revenue-based activities, because to me, it leaves it pretty open-ended. Because if somebody has a wedding, that's not, you know, they're not renting a place out, this could apply to them. Did you put, unless you put in the beginning of ordinance, this only applies to short-term rentals. And then the other question I have for the attorneys.
So why, as I understand it, which you want to be clear, that, that, that number six would apply to?
The revenue generating.
Revenue generating.
Activities, like, that includes weddings, blah, blah, weddings, and.
What do they call those parties where you have to pay to get in?
I don't know, rave parties, I don't know.
Raves, yeah, you don't have raves in there.
So.
Do you agree that they should be prohibited?
Is it along those lines?
No, no, it should, these rules apply, it says these rules apply.
Are prohibited.
No, I don't think it says prohibited, it says that these rules apply. So.
What, I've not, oh yeah, let's see, with the following rules.
Yeah. All of those events which have the potential to cause.
Are prohibited, so we're prohibiting. I, I think that we're prohibiting renting out your home for a wedding, is what we're doing.
That's too bad, there's.
For a corporate event.
Okay, all right.
Commercial event.
Okay, so then my question is, what, my question is, what's the difference between, this is an attorney issue then, what's the difference between that and having a private wedding at your house, and you're having parking issues, blah, blah, blah? Wouldn't we be sued by somebody saying, you know, why is, why is there, why, I'm renting it out, but I'm, I can't do it, but you can do it, because you're not renting it out?
So we're putting in place, we're considering regulations for rental of residential property. And what we're saying here is that you cannot use a short-term rental for the purpose of a wedding. Now, if your family, if your, if your son was getting married, and you were using your home as a site, that's not.
I understand that, but are we opening up ourselves to a lawsuit?
Why?
On what basis?
On a basis that some private person can have a wedding and do the same impact, have the same impact, but yet, you know, I'm, I'm doing the same thing, it's the only difference is I'm just charging people to use my house.
So I, I think what we're doing here is setting standards as to what can and can't be done in the context of a rental, you know, as, as a business.
Okay, I mean.
I mean, your personal use of your home, as you deem appropriate, if it is to have a party or a celebration, is, is fine.
Yeah. So, what, so that doesn't apply to like our rec center, so if somebody wants to throw a wedding, they pay for it, it wouldn't apply?
No.
Okay. Okay, up to section three.
Can I just build on that?
Yeah.
I actually had the same concern. I've had a neighbor had a lovely wedding in their backyard, we don't want to exempt that from happening. But, let's say I'm having a cancer fundraising event in my backyard, and people are charged admission to attend a cancer event, or a campaign fundraiser, to me, that's, I'm not renting the house out as a short-term rental, it's just an event that's going to last a couple of hours. Do we need to differentiate between that type of use, because there is money involved, and the short-term rental?
I think that's a different issue.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that we need to, what we're doing is looking at renting out your house. So I think that, that would fall under kind of a different set of regulations.
When I read this, I basically took it, that this is if, this person, this resident or property has taken out the permit and, and everything, and they have a wedding, it's different. Of course, if I've done that for one room in my house, and then I have a wedding, I could get caught up in that, even if it's a wedding for a family member. That's a gray area, maybe that's something we keep open to see how it works. You understand, if I took out a permit at my house, and then I decided to, and I'm renting out a bedroom, and then the person renting the bedroom wants to have a wedding in their backyard, that hits what I think is, Mr. Lee's.
We are saying that that would be prohibited as a short-term rental.
Okay.
So through the chair.
This is all in the context of a short-term rental. So these activities cannot be conducted as part of the short-term rental arrangement.
And line, line B says renters must comply, and permittees must ensure compliance of their renters with the following rules. So the way that I interpret it is that, is specifically within the context of a short-term rental.
Correct.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lee, did you have any more?
Yeah, one more. Section, in the same attachment, section one, section 3.30.060, registration.
Yeah, where are you going here? It's like 7.3 point, whatever.
No, it's attachment one, section one, I don't know the page, the page number is one corresponds with what we have in front of us. Sorry.
3.30 point.
060.
060, okay. Everyone with registration.
Yeah, within 10 days after commencing business, each operator of any hotel, renting occupancy to transit shall register said hotel with tax administrator. Did you mean hosting unit or hotel?
So hotel is defined in the, in the transient occupancy tax ordinance broadly, in, to include any, to include short-term rentals, and as well as traditional hotels. So this, so even though it says hotels here, it includes short-term rentals.
So our transit occupancy ordinance in general considers a short-term rental for a period of less than 30 days.
So, this registration section applies to short-term rentals, right? That's what's confusing me.
So, so, you know, your traditional hotels have already registered.
Right.
I mean, we know who they are.
Right.
So what we're getting at here are, are people who have not historically been traditional hotels.
Right.
I mean, this is the short-term rental market that now is occurring in residential areas.
Okay, for clarification, can we add hosting unit, because that's defined, hotel's not defined in this ordinance.
Well, it is defined, this is amending your transit occupancy tax ordinance.
Oh, I see, okay. Part of the hotel.
We're only amending certain sections. Oh, this is the entire?
No, no, it's.
It's not, no, it's not the entire ordinance. So, there is, there is an appropriate definition in the ordinance.
Okay.
So for that particular section, the whole ordinance isn't there. This is the revenue section of the municipal code, so that, in a separate section that's not printed on that page, because it's not changing, hotel is defined as all of those types of uses, including short-term rental.
So, a hotel means any structure or portion of any structure which is occupied or intended or designed for occupancy by transients for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping purposes, and includes any hotel in tourist home or house, motel, studio, hotel, bachelor hotel, lodging house, room, a rooming house, apartment house, dormitory, public or private club, mobile home, or trailer.
Thank you, counsel, is that good enough, Mr. Lee?
It's very broad, it always has been.
Is that, okay. Ms. Schneider?
I didn't know if Airbnb was here in the audience. Some of my questions, when I read through everything Airbnb, I want to be fair to the points that they brought up. They didn't like the fact that we would be publishing the names, and I'd just like to hear how they handled, if, let's say there's a property that has had a history of police violations or fire violations, and we're supposed to carte blanche, give them a permit, how are they doing that in other cities where there might be, basically, somebody you really don't want to have a permit? So I'm glad that the city's not going in that direction, but when I read Airbnb's comments compared to what we're choosing to do, I want to be fair that they have a hearing on that. But I don't see Airbnb in the audience. So, I'm going to say that I would take, I want to make sure that before we give a permit, that we know if this particular property under the existing owner has a history of problems. And I would assume, although it's not stated here, if they have a history of problems, they're not going to get a permit. Is that the case?
So I think one of the criteria is, is that there be no more than three violations in any, the past year.
But that's once they've gotten the permit. What about the history? And I don't want to hold a house responsible for something previous owners might have done. So it's under the current ownership, or the current lessie, lessor, you know, how are we going to track that?
To answer that question, I think we have to look at that on a case-by-case basis, and I think that the way that the ordinance is written, it gives the director that discretion, and I think that we look at that as whether or not these were health and safety violations in the past, and we'd have to take that into consideration.
Okay.
And try to determine whether or not it was the same owner, you know, there might be, might be a little bit more complicated than that, but we have to do our level best to try to figure out what we have, and then make an assessment whether or not it's appropriate or not.
And if we can just make that clear to the public, if you read through all of the documents, one of the problems that Airbnb had with the city of Millbrae is that it wouldn't give carte blanche permit to whomever applied, that in fact, the discretion is with the Community Development Department. I support that. I support that. My other question is.
Can I expand on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, so my question along those lines is directly related to the Mangold letter here. Somebody who's operating without any permit, what are we doing about that? You know, they choose not to apply and they don't, but there are obviously people in this city right now who are violating the regulations and we know that, but they're being disruptive, particularly to the Mangold family here, so what's happening?
What would happen in that, in that particular case, I think that we would then be able to, with this policy, we'd have the ability to go out and to try to provide better enforcement. I mean, we would go out there basically and provide violation notices or give them a warning, we try to work with them first, of course. But if we don't get there, then we could still go through our normal channels and processes that we have with code enforcement.
Could you explain to me what a violation notice is if I haven't applied?
If you haven't applied, you said, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, these people.
Well, you, you need to have a permit.
Right, okay, I'm not getting anything.
Be able to engage a short-term rental.
I'm going to do it, what are you going to do to me?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna be fined a thousand dollars a day.
Okay, thank you, that's what I want to hear, there you go, okay. I'm not doing that, I'm just saying, okay, people need to know.
It's not our goal, but we.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen, but some of the neighbors in these letters might have some issues right now. Okay, thank you, Ms. Schneider, go ahead.
I, I am confused over studios, I read about the, so a studio is zero, but if you're renting it as an Airbnb, then you're clearly not using it as housing stock unless you don't mind people coming in. So what does that mean, what does that really mean, studio?
Orders, so basically, it's, like you said, so studio is considered zero bedroom, so you don't get the two to begin with, so you just get the plus two. And so at night, you could have two people there, and, or two renters there, and during the day, four, you have four, four people on site. That's how it's calculated, so it's, the.
Yeah, it just, if, and again, for the public, one of the findings that are happening, and there are more articles coming out now, that the conversion of single-family homes or units within a multifamily residential unit are being turned into rental property and that's removing it from full-time rental. And that's one of the things adding to the shortage of housing for families or couples or individuals. So part of this ordinance is to also track that and make sure that we're not losing valuable all-year-round housing stock to people trying to make a buck.
So we, we do try, we, this policy does try to address that, actually. So essentially, we, when we talk about the non-hosted, and I was trying to give a, I'm going to try again, because it's, even with us, with staff, we've talked about this quite a bit and it's, perhaps a better definition is out there that we can change in the future. But a hosted is, you're, you live there, it's your property, you sleep there all year long and you're renting out an extra bedroom that's hosted. The non-hosted concept, though, is, is that you, it's still your primary residence. And it's your primary residence, not in the essence of like you own real estate and it's your primary residence, you have a vacation home for tax purposes, that kind of thing. It's your primary residence, you live, you could be a renter, you could be renting that, that, that unit and you have a three-bedroom home that you're renting as a renter, you don't own it, but it's your primary residence. So that meets the residency requirement with our application process in essence for a non-hosted. But then it's, you know, of course, enforcement's a challenge, right?
Let me see if I can help you, I'm a teacher, I'm a single teacher, I have a studio and I'm going to go take a group of students to Europe for six weeks. I rent out my house for six weeks. Okay, I think I just explained my own question, I can see now how a studio can work, next question.
That's, that's capped to 100, 100 nights a year.
Right, six weeks is less than 100, yeah, okay. Back to the 100 days, thank you for bringing that one up. I have been told and I've seen some written examples where I buy a house and I rent it out for 100 days, basically in weekend blocks, and I can make more money that way than actually having a family live in that house or roommates or whatever. Whatever the family unit, the residential unit is, they can actually make more money renting it out on weekends than putting it into the, the rental housing stock. How, I understa, I like the 100 days in terms of I'm going away for the summer or I'm going away for winter break or something like that. But how do we stop that? Is it the residential, the 265 residential's enough to stop?
You, you, it has to be, you have to occupy, you have to be the primary owner of the residence, so that would not happen.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, is it enough, I don't know, I mean, in your example, it's, I mean, if, if you're saying that in, in only 100 days you can pay for it, it's more profitable, well then maybe 100 days is.
A way to look at it is, if, if, if that's the case, you could go away for 100 days a year and rent it out and then not rent it if you chose, but it's still your primary place of residence. So for 100 days a year, you could go somewhere else, rent out your house, but it is your primary place of residence. So for 265 days a year, your head's got to be on the pillow, sort of speed.
Okay, so if I had a vacation home, I could rent it out for those weekends, but I'm still there during the year. That's the one that it, it, I, I, I don't want to take up more time on that, it just kind of makes me uncomfortable.
Vacation home, it's not your primary.
Not your primary residence, not.
No, 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 but I could go to my vacation home and make a big profit on my house on the weekends and the neighbors are left with a party house every weekend. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Well, but now we have rules and regulations and enforcement criteria that we can come in and enforce. And, and if, if it is in fact a problem, we could revoke the permit, we could fine them up to a thousand dollars a day. We now have teeth to, to enforce, which was part of the problem.
Okay, my last comment then is on the registration form, the application. It only asks for the renter or the, the agent, it doesn't ask for the actual owner unless I read it too quickly. And the problem I have is, I am curious how much of our housing stock is owned by absentee or out-of-country owners. So if part of our goal is to make sure that people can buy a house in Millbrae and live here and contribute to Millbrae, I'm not sure absentee ownership, although I do understand a lot of our owners, when they get older, their kids are hanging on to the house because they don't know what they're doing yet, so there's some of that, there's some of that fluctuation. But articles have been written about Southern California, for example, where a significant amount of housing stock, single-family dwellings, have been bought by corporations and they're turning them into short-term rentals because it's more profitable. So I just, the application itself doesn't even tell us who the owners are. So I'd be more comfortable if the application said the owner, the, if they're leasing it out to somebody and the, the agent on there. And that's all my comments till I hear from the public, thank you.
And might I add something along those lines? So is anybody going to be confirming with the county assessor as to the validity if somebody says they own the home?
Whether it's, whether they're homeowner?
Yeah.
We will have to be doing that, yes.
Okay, and I'll note for the record, too, that many of the homes in our city and throughout the county are held in trust.
LLCs or.
Yeah, so they are residents living there, but it's quote, "in the name of a trust." So it's, it's still a single, you know, a lot of people hold property in trust, that's all you can do.
I'll say that the staff recognizes that as we move forward implementing this, we're going to kind of have to work through and kind of hopefully massage and make it work better over time.
And I'd just like to point out, because Mr. Halliburton, Ms. Oliva, I'm going to twist, this is the first step. We can, if something's not working, come back and try to make it better. So this is not forever written in stone and we're stuck with, but we need to make this first step, so I appreciate all the efforts. Mr. Halliburton?
So on the permit, the application, the applicant information, that could be either the owner or a renter of the property, right?
I think it says you need the owner's permission, though.
Correct, yeah, they would need the owner's permission if, if it's a sub, a sublease. Correct. Correct.
Ms. Oliva, you have a question?
Most of it's been answered except for one, one slight fly I want to point out, maybe, possible, that it's 100 days, 100 days per house, not household. So the, like, like tax laws, it's 250 exempt per married couple or per couple. So I would make it clear that it's 100 days for the residency, not for the residence.
Good point.
The type of unit, for the unit itself.
Well, if that's.
The address.
Just because, I, I experience this a little, probably a little more than you guys.
Can you say that again?
So you get 100 days to rent it out per house, not household. Okay, thank you.
Okay, with the permission of the council and we can ask questions later, I have some speakers here. Okay, Tom, you're going to hang around and answer questions? Our first speaker is Ophelia Angula, Angulo, excuse me. Thank you very much. Welcome, could you put the mic towards your mouth there, thank you.
Good evening, I've been a resident from, in Millbrae for over 20 years and I live in the Lamita Hills area. We have a really big problem in our neighborhood. My bedroom's in the front of the house and we have this issue of these Airbnb, whatever. And you can't have your window open because there's chatting, cars driving up, pulling into the driveway, backing out, parking's an issue. I have grandkids and there's numerous different people coming in and out. And, you know, it's a safety issue, it's a really big safety issue. I moved there because I didn't want to live in an apartment, I don't want to live by a hotel. So having these Airbnb or these short-term rentals, what does it do to my property value of my home? I want to know. There's, there's a real big problem with parking. I don't know the people that are walking in the middle of the night down the street, 12 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock at night, it's scary. So, I mean, these are real issues that are happening now and they need to be addressed. Thank you.
I think we're going to take all the public comments and these are all very important comments. Let's take notes so that staff can address them all at once, if that's okay? Our next speaker, Michael Ludwin Williams. And staff. Hello.
So, hello, my name is Michael Ludwin Williams, I teach at the University of San Francisco. My wife and I have been resident hosts for Airbnb for the past two and a half years and have never had any problems with our guests. My guess is some owners, some homeowners would rather Airbnb went away because they believe the presence of Airbnb is bad for their property values.
Could you get closer to the microphone, please, thank you, sir.
Passing this audience is for them perhaps the first step in punishing resident Airbnb hosts who are, like them, legitimate residents of Millbrae. This ordinance will create tension between resident hosts and neighbors and put a, puts a target on our backs, giving our neighbors the opportunity to stick it to us. For us as highly responsible resident hosts, this resolution is a heavy-handed and disproportionate response to the issue that was provoked by an absent host. You may have good reason to require absent hosts to register, but for resident hosts like us, it feels unnecessary, burdensome, and deeply unfair. Being on this kind of register, it would feel like being treated like a sex offender and that's just wrong.
I'm Jo, Michael's wife, and we've been here before. We can't say enough about how much Airbnb has brought into our home wonderful people, being in Millbrae and being able to have so many people come from the airport, so many foreigners, people to really give back to Millbrae. One thing I feel you don't really understand is how much integrity that Airbnb goes into screening every single person. We have not had one problem with anybody, we respect everybody comes into our home and everybody has, has just been wonderful. So I, I feel bad about unfortunate situations, but I think with respect of opening our home to people that need an overnight stay or a private stay has, has just been wonderful. And Airbnb has just been a godsend to us. And we really respect all the work that they do to protect our home and our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can all hold our comments because the people are waiting here, Desmond Hayes? Good evening.
Prepare the statement, give me a couple of seconds.
Sure.
Okay, sort of following on with what the previous host just said, whenever I think about a registry, I think about, you know, sex offenders, maybe double felons that just moved in next door, something where there's a high rate of recidivism or some implicit public threat. When you look at hosts that are in good standing, that haven't done anything wrong, that have hosted for years, never an incident, never a complaint, I feel what that's going to do is it's going to take most of our neighbors, who currently I have very good relations with, and it's going to turn them into observers, sort of casual business watchers. Where now, say if I have someone pull up, you know, I go get, go get the guest, I go grab the suitcase, I bring it back into the house, now I'm going to have, you know, a house to the left, a house to the right, a house across the street where the light goes on and it's like, okay, what's happening now that, you know, we get to jot down everything that happens. My concern is that there's a high potential for abuse, basically. There are already nuisance ordinances on the books that can be enforced by code enforcement and law enforcement as it stands. And we're going to be registering with you guys as Airbnb hosts, so it's very easy to connect the dots and say, okay, you know, we have this here Airbnb host, we have a nuisance complaint at this residence and something like that should trigger the notification of everyone within a 200-foot radius or 500-foot radius that, you know, this is a problem house, it's an Airbnb, you have the huge fines that you guys are able to levy in addition to just revoking our permits outright. And it shouldn't be the cart before the horse, where you're basically condemning us as being, you know, either A, a problem or B, a potential problem before anything has happened, especially because most of us have been doing this for years with no issues. It should be something where, you know, we're not presumed guilty just by the fact that we're here. And I think ideally, it would go in the opposite direction, where if there is a violation, A, there's the fines and B, then there should be a notification. But you shouldn't put a target on our back just because we're hosting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Brian Pigler, I'm sorry, Brian, I know I'm botching this, my apologies. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, sorry about my attire, I had to come from a little coaching situation. So just like the, the other people here, you know, I just, to be clear and concise, I wrote down what I want to say. But, I mean, I could go on forever with the situation. My name's Brian Pigler, I'm a homeowner and a property owner in Millbrae and have been, actually moved into my house, the, the one that we live in, 16 years ago. In the past few city council meetings, when this issue's been on the agenda, I presented my family and my neighbors' situation regarding short-term rentals in an R1 zone, R block. Yeah, so I presented my family and our neighbors' situation, which has been a negative situation, regarding short-term rentals in an R1 zone, which is our block. I'm not going to take up any more time retelling my story that has negatively impacted the lives of myself, my family, and the neighbors in the immediate area, and I would say much more than 500 square feet. This 500 feet thing is another issue. I ask that you look at some of the recent results and changing laws here in the state of California and local ordinances. I'm sure Ms. Pappen and any other law enforcement there, the city attorney. One of the most familiar to the general public is what somebody spoke about earlier, and that's home burglaries and the recent rash of auto thefts, we call them auto boostings, right? That's the result of changing an existing law, I'm not going to get into which law it was, but now, state process, state lawmakers are attempting to figure out ways to rescind or take back that change. Now, when you decide to change a law, there's really no going back. Now. I ask, I'm not saying that short-term rentals with the hosted, host, hosted short-term rentals have anything to do with the burglary, theft, nonviolent crime, I'm not saying any of that. I'm saying it's a nightmare living next door to one, as a lady said right here, it's a nightmare for the neighborhood, you know? So if you go ahead and you want to change the law, I'm going to tell you, there's going to be all types of different negative results from that. Just like when they changed the law that made theft a misdemeanor, you can't, it doesn't, doesn't, theft's a misdemeanor once, it should be a misdemeanor twice, the third time it became a felony and you might go to prison, right? became a felony and you might go to prison, right? Now, it's a misdemeanor 100 times. So, uh, I'm asking that you do not change existing ordinance, zoning ordinances that already exist to accommodate Airbnb or any other short-term rental platforms. Some of the potential problems that will occur regarding municipal zoning code changes have already been presented to you and you all as a council have debated them right here in front of us. You guys could go on forever and I could tear up this thing all day long because there's so many holes in it. With this new ordinance, potential negative and positive results, and legal processes taken against the city of Millbrae, you know, that's all, that's all going to happen, guaranteed. I appreciate the work that the city has put into trying to come up with a plan for this issue, to try to solve this issue. There's quite a bit left to be desired on that proposed ordinance. Please vote no on amending municipal code chapters 3.30, 5.100, and 10.05. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The final speaker slip I have is Niles. And I will encourage people, if you didn't have an opportunity to get out everything you wanted to say, please send us a letter or email. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Yes, I'm Niles. I've lived in Millbrae for about 20 years. And I'm a single father, I have three kids in college, and Airbnb has allowed me to put them through college. I had one son graduating last year, I mean, last month, he got a close to six-figure job, so I have two more to go. And Airbnb allowed me to do this, basically, and we've never had any trouble with hosts, the guests, I mean, with the guests. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous. So it's all been a wonderful experience for, for me as a host in Millbrae. And I think this new ordinance is just going way, way, way overboard. Number one, it's not enforceable. I don't know how you plan on making sure people register, number one, and number two, what are the penalties and how are you going to enforce that, too? I read a study from San Francisco and New York City, which also has some Airbnb laws. And a major, well, not major, but a big percentage of hosts, they don't comply with the law or the rules. So consider that, and that's going to create tension between the council of the city and good Airbnb hosts in Millbrae who never had any trouble. So my, my, my request is to please be careful, make it much more simple, this, this ordinance that I saw on the screen here, just like spinning my head, how are you going to control the number of days, 100 days here, 100 days, two people at night, four people in daytime? How are you going to control that? How are you going to know that? It's just way, way, way complicated. And I'm a computer engineer, I, I deal with complicated things every day, and that one was very complicated. So my request is please reconsider, this is just way, way, way too strict. And in terms of business license and fees, please keep it low because living costs in the Bay Area, as you know, is very high, and also in Millbrae, and we're struggling to, oh, I'm struggling to get three kids through college, and Airbnb has helped me manage that, and just keep those things in mind, please.
Thank you. That is the final speaker slip. Does anybody else want to make a comment before we close the public hearing? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, yes, sir. Come on up, please. We didn't vote yet, you're still in. Good.
Sorry to delay the floor, but...
You can do that later, we'll get it.
I am Mr. Mangold, and I have had a, I'm not going to call it a B&B because you've got to go through B&B to get it. This is just somebody who's renting their house rooms out. They added illegal rooms, they've rented out, we've been getting the people coming in, like sneaking in at night around 12 o'clock, they slam the doors. I've got my bedroom, their bedroom, their bathroom, they leave a white light on all night long, I had to buy blackout shades so I could sleep, and then they wake you up because they sit in to talk. And their bathroom is right 10 feet away from my bedroom. And I, all I hear is noise all night long. I haven't had a sound sleep for three weeks. And these are unregistered people, so right there you could get $21,000, you know? So I just want to make my comment. The people who have B&Bs, that's fine, you're going through B&B. These guys are on their own. And like I said, my wife and I haven't slept good for three weeks because of the noise these people make. And then they park where I have to park, and then you've got to park around the corner. These people should be parking around the corner, okay? That's all I've got to say.
Oh, sorry. Again, before we close the public hearing, would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, come on up.
Did you get the address for that?
I have Mr. Mangold's address, he sent us a letter.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ken Boyd, I've lived in Millbrae for about 45 years. Across the street I have an Airbnb, and I asked the woman about it because there's six cars parked out on the street every day, and she told me it was none of my business. Subsequently, I told her that it was because it's in violation of the R1 restrictions and it affects my property value. And her tenants fight, throw cigarettes, park cars, it's just a mess. And I, I really wonder the quality of housing she's providing. I suspect it's just a bunch of little cubicles with or without a bathroom, I have no idea. But, you know, the house wasn't designed to have a half a dozen extra people. And I called the police, I don't know if they did anything. And so, you know, I realize the city would like to have additional revenue, and they quoted $600,000. I bet you would spend more than $600,000 trying to supervise this. Every house in Millbrae is, you know, probably an average of 50 years old with one or two parking spaces. Where do you put all these extra cars? They're going out on the street. And so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Could you give us your address, sir?
758 Berkshire Drive.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, before we close the public, oh, another one, come on up. No, that's okay, that's why we're doing this, please. Okay, that's, this is the opportunity, go right ahead.
My name's Carrie Arco, I have children, I attend Green Hills, or my children attend Green Hills PTA very, our school, excuse me, we're very involved. My question is, it's just unrealistic that it's going to be enforced. So when I make a call to the police station, and I don't have an officer show up for 45 minutes, but there's random people, you know, across the street, standing out in the middle of the street, my kids, I can't safely go to my car that's not parked in front of my house because it's around the corner, because tenants are in my spot, or not tenants, these people that are, who knows who they are. I feel uncomfortable. So it's obvious that these people that will comply, they're not the ones that are the problem. The problem are the ones that aren't going to register, they're not going to do anything. How am I going to feel safe? How am I going to feel safe walking my children to school? Or letting them play out front? Or anything? They're random strangers. And as far as registering, no, I don't think you should have to register, but I do feel like I have the right to know if you're going to let strangers into your house. Because how am I going to feel comfortable in my house where I bought, where we live because we have kids and we want to be in a good area and feel safe? How am I going to feel safe when I know it's not going to be, nothing's going, what's going to come of it? You know? How is it going to be enforced? That's what I want to know. Because these people, you're right, they, they shouldn't have to pay all these, or whatever you're going to do, these poor people that are actually going to comply aren't the problem. The problem is the ones who are putting up illegal bedrooms, who have no permits, who are putting two-by-fours in sheet rock to make bedrooms. And these studios you're going to rent out for the two people, are they the illegal in-laws in the backyard that they're building to rent out as studios? I just, I don't feel safe. And my, my question is, how am I going to feel safe?
Could you, could you give us your address? Just, or fill out the form, just drop off the form. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, once again, any more speakers? Okay, seeing no speakers, we are going to vote to close the public comment.
The council voted unanimously to close public comment on item 13.
And I do want to thank everyone for their public comments. This is all part of the community, and we appreciate your coming all the way down here and letting us know your thoughts on all of this. Okay, I'm sure the council has lots of thoughts now, too, having heard everyone. Would anyone like to go first? Okay, wait, which one of you was first?
I, I have to say that it's, it's a real sway in safety because one, at one council meeting, we have abused neighbors that are just up in arms and they were very frightened and it was an awful thing, so we have to put something into place. And then you have, the consensus here is that we put something into place and it's not good enough. And I want to address how do I feel safe, the last speaker. And I'm, I'm not so sure that any neighborhood or any neighbor or any tenant, but for transparency, I, I'm in real estate. And we do a lot of background checks on who we're going to put into a house, and we do the best due diligence we can for the neighborhood, representing anybody that owns that house. And it's not always good. I mean, sometimes it doesn't turn out good at all. And I'm really sorry for that. I hate the thought that you're not feeling safe in your own neighborhood.
My car has stolen twice out front of my house, so I've been victimized by the theft and everything, I've raised the permit, that's my safety.
And I'm, I'm really sorry for that. I'm not so sure that putting an ordinance to Airbnb is going to be the answer to you. And I would have to agree with Brian that spoke, that there's a lot of holes in this. And if those, of those that want to rent out or even participate in our community as a whole, aren't even going to know it exists. So I'm going to say that I would like to see the public as a community grassroots-type kind of campaign, that if these issues are coming about, if you're feeling unsafe or if you have, if you can't sleep at 1:00 in the morning because somebody's with the white light on in your bedroom, you've got to call the cops, you've got to call the police. And I would, I would say for the most part, we get very few complaints from the police that they don't show up or they wait, you know, they're not there on long. If you're not feeling safe and you call our police department, I would venture to believe that they're going to be out there. And I would say, bug them so they move, more than they're bugging you. I would say that, you know, those, those, those people don't belong here. We're not a party town, we're not, we're not a hotel town, and, but, but yet, if it subsidizes some income for college, or, I mean, there's hip housing that has sharing in rooms, there's, there's people that are not Airbnb. That's rentals that help people for companionship, for other reasons, just financially. So while I could appreciate the ordinance, and certainly a lot of work on it, if we're going to do something with this ordinance, it needs a lot of more work to make it whole and for the purpose that we intended it for.
Ms., is that it, Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
I also had a house that put spotlights all the way around it, and the spotlight showed through my bedroom all, they actually ran 24 hours a day, and I did call the police. And the police came in at 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 and told me I should get black shades or night shades, which I was very offended about. It's not, we shouldn't have to put up shades because people choose to put spotlights up. I hear you on the safety. I actually do support an ordinance, and this is why. Right now we have nothing. When you have nothing, you can't do anything. So whereas I think that there's rooms for improvement, for example, I think the application has a fault by not identifying who the actual owners are, we should all know. But when a couple of you commented that being on a registry is akin to being on a sexual offender registry or a felon registry, I hear that. But I also wondered, when you started renting your house out, did you go and talk to your neighbors? When I have a party at my house, I go tell the neighbors. I ask, I let them know that there might be some extra cars coming. That's just the way we were brought up as a neighborhood. Now, we all come from many other places where the traditions might be different. And I think this goes back to when we used to have a welcome wagon in Millbrae. When we first moved here, the welcome wagon showed up, and it was a way of introducing you to the neighborhood norms. So I would have loved, I would like to hear from the Airbnb hosts, how did you let your neighbors know that there are going to be strange people coming in? And my second question to the current hosts, and I don't think we're trying to take away your ability to be a current host and to be a good host and a good neighbor, but those people coming in, their flight comes in late, plane gets in at 2:00 in the morning, how do you get them to come in? I've gotten off ferries and gotten into an Airbnb, or a bed and breakfast at 2:00 in the morning, and the host asked us to be very quiet, they told us where they left the key. That's how we were trained to be a good person coming in, to basically, this was well before Airbnb came up, up in Alaska, how to be a good person to the people surrounding us. So I think we need more discussion there, but I think we have to have an ordinance tonight. A couple of my other questions, and I'm going to read just a few things off of Jean-Joe, Planning Commissioner Jean-Joe, because she's got a couple of good concerns here. The discussion about the deposit, I read that, and I could see that for a host or a new host, $1,000 could be difficult. She's asking for clarification between a $1,000 deposit between the host and a non-hosted facility. So I think we need clarification there. When I read the chart where, where staff wrote up the changes, it says there's some flexibility. If there's a hardship case, there's a ability for community development to waive that $1,000 fee, is that correct?
You need to go to the microphone, sir.
Yes, that's correct. The way that, the way that it was changed or recrafted was that the community development director would have the ability to increase or decrease that amount.
Okay. No, I didn't think about it until now, but let's say we have the couple here that have hosted for years, and they had to pay $1,000 now to get their permit, but they've operated for an additional year with no problems. Could they get their deposit back or is it in perpetuity?
We don't, I don't think that we have it addressed that way currently, we don't have that addressed in the ordinance itself, as I recall.
There's an incentive for being a good host. So just throwing that out there is something to consider, and we can still take action tonight and make a list of things to consider as we test the process. But if we don't do an ordinance, we can't control, we can't get the police into the incident that happened on Lombardi Lane. We need the ordinance to be able to give those policing powers. And the public needs, and, and those of you that are hosts need to understand that. The registry, I think you should tell your neighbors anyway, if you're running a business in your home, your neighbors should know. My neighbors who are running an accounting firm out of their home told us. They said every once in a while you might see someone drive up, so that we knew what was going on in our neighborhood. So I, I, I hear you, but that's what a registry is for, is so that people will know what's going on in their own homes. Jean, also, the suggestion limiting parking, that's the biggest problem with the illegal Airbnb next to me, is the six, seven, eight, nine cars all the time.
Ms. Schneider, can I? Evidently MCTV does not, David? There's no picture being televised?
Only sound.
It's like my Last Princess Cruise.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's, do you want to wait and try to fix it and do a break?
Can you check?
I could go talk to the host then.
How long? Ms. Oliva, you got the text message?
I got two texts.
That there's no picture.
Yeah.
There's sound, which is important.
Okay.
I think we should probably try to go ahead.
All right.
It's, well...
Comcast or AT&amp;T, either one.
Okay, please continue, Ms. Schneider.
If people are having a problem, if you go to your computer and go to YouTube, you can see it live streaming, you may have fewer problems if Comcast or AT&amp;T U-verse have had these historic problems.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so the, I'm trying to read the parking situation. Do we have a process in place, or can we get a process in place if parking becomes a problem and we can have a process of working with host or non-hosted units with parking?
We can, we, we would have to work on developing that process. I, I think the idea is, is, it, it's a tough one. I don't know that I have a great answer as far as... a tough one. I don't know that I have a great answer as far as figuring out that enforcement, because in reality, it's difficult to tell who these cars belong to. You know, we don't...
If I may, I mean, the whole point of this is to have an ordinance, and I think that we can enforce it. So if there is a permitted Airbnb location, and we start to get complaints that there is not sufficient parking, and we work with the neighborhood, and we work with the permittee, but they do not have enough parking spaces, then we have the ability to actually revoke the permit due to lack of parking. So we do ultimately have that ability to enforce this. You know, we want to try to work something out. We're trying to make this happen. Right now, everybody that's come up here and said that they have an Airbnb is an illegal use.
So what about the people that come up here and say they have neighbors that are, you know, out at 1:00 in the morning, or that they have, I mean, why can't we enforce that?
Same thing, so same. We can enforce that under our current
Right.
rules and regulations, and then if it is an actual Airbnb, unpermitted or permitted, we still have authority to come in and enforce and regulate and get complaints. So this just allows additional tool.
For a moment, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
For a moment.
I do, but go ahead.
Just kidding, go ahead.
If, in fact, the people that are on, in Lamita Hills, have neighbors that are being disruptive, they're out of ordinance, the noise code, or whatever it is, and they, we don't have a permit to be registered or not today, and they call because they can't sleep for the last two weeks, or three weeks, why can't we enforce that with the neighborhood now? What is this going to do for that?
So we can, a couple of things. So right now, if there's noise issues, or if there's a large party, or something like that, that's a nuisance, we can regulate that. If, in fact, say, light, using that as an example, if it is an Airbnb location, we, through our permit and discretionary permit approval process, can work then with that property owner to shield that light, or eliminate that light. If they don't do it, then we can revoke their permit. They're no longer able to then rent their rooms.
Okay.
So that...
I understand that, but it doesn't exist now. So if there's no permit, and they're disruptive, how could we say we don't allow Airbnb? I mean, why can't we do that now?
We're focusing on one company, too, here, okay?
Yes, short-term rentals.
That are here in this audience, who are, I mean, they have every right to their homeownership, and having that undisturbed. So it's a problem right now, and I think this is just preliminary step here. But until we can work something out here, these people who have submitted letters, and who have been here tonight, they don't have a quality of life, and that's a problem that needs to be addressed immediately. So that's just one of the issues we need to work through here. But, and if no one is, if you are not getting a response from law enforcement, please document the time you called, and send us an email, let us know, because we will, you should, whatever the response time is here, and it should be a reasonable response time, we need to know if you are not getting responses to that. So please, okay, yes, Ms. Schneider, I apologize.
Just, no, just to follow up on that, I think the question is, how many nuisance complaints will it take? And I think we haven't quite crafted that out yet, because after a while, you get tired of calling, and you get tired of having the police officer, or the sheriff, show up at your door saying, there's really, I can tell them to quiet, and they'll quiet down today, but tomorrow, or two days later, there's the same problem. I'm guessing that the good hosts try to make sure that their clients, I'm not sure what the right word is. Guests, okay, thank you. That your guests, you know, treat everyone with mutual respect, and it's the bad ones. So how do you get them, can Airbnb do a better job of, hey, you're walking into a neighborhood, please be respectful, please don't, blah, blah, blah? That's not taking care of the gentleman with, that now sounds like you have a boarding house next door. But we, boarding house is another issue that we've talked about, and we need to do more enforcement on that. But back to Jean Jo's, the parking, I just would ask staff, Jean always has really good points, if we make sure we encourage these as we go forward. There was another part in the ordinance change, Airbnb didn't like the fact that the police could enter a premise when there was no agent. And the agent, the documentation, the language says that an agent has to be available within a certain number of minutes, but what happens if they don't show up? So when I was reading that, there's, it's a non-hosted facility, most of these concerns are the non-hosted facilities. So non-hosted facility, something's going on in there, the neighbors call the police, even somebody inside calls the police, but the police can't enter because the agent has not given them permission. Airbnb wanted no permission, period, flat. We've gone a partial way there, but what happens? And I will tell you, a week and a half ago, at my house, the house next door to me, there are the police, they're there for two and a half hours. There's some kind of domestic disturbance by some of the whatever kind of tenants are in there, or guests, I don't know, because they're not registered. So, but that's just one of many, many, many at that house. But the police couldn't go in. They had to stand outside. They've knocked on my door. Well, that's what happened next door. Okay, so the gentleman in the audience is saying that if it was a domestic violence complaint, they could get in.
The gentleman in the audience is a law enforcement officer, so he's trying to explain...
No, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Then maybe we need to clarify that.
And I can imagine that, like, it will happen. I mean, there's going to be situations where somebody's not available, something happens, right?
The question that was asked is that if you don't get a response within the hour under this ordinance, what does happen? Because I really don't want our law enforcement officers hanging around for an hour. We've got other things to do, so cars aren't stolen and broken into here. So what's happening?
So if...
Well, we would document that. It'd be a violation, essentially, and I think that we would be able to revoke it under health and safety, is the theory. So the idea is, is that those people that do not comply, or that are bad actors, is that this, now, we have a policy in place by which to enforce, and therefore to revoke the permit.
So how, if I might ask, Ms. Schneider, may I? If I might ask here, so there's a noisy visitor next door who's partaking in a short-term rental here. How am I reporting that, and who's going to be taking notice here? You're not going to have a code enforcement officer available at 1:00 AM. I can tell you that right now. So how am I going to get resolution, and peace of mind, and some sleep?
After hours, those calls will be going to the sheriff. If code enforcement's not available, the idea is that the calls will be going to the sheriff, and that the sheriff, if it was a disturbance or an incident...
Well, besides the right of entry here, our residents, I mean, we, in my mind, we got to this point primarily for public safety here. So do we have an agreement with the sheriff's office when they are responding? How are you going to get that information that that person, who hopefully has registered now, has a strike against them?
Not sure. That's, I think, a mayor happened.
We will coordinate with the sheriff's department. We will communicate and have a report of the situation. They will, pursuant to their investigation or follow-up, will work with our other code enforcement staff, and our community development department to determine, okay, we're hearing that this is a short-term rental, it looks like this is a short-term rental, do they have a permit? Has a permit been issued? If there's a violation, we will issue a notice of violation. If they do not comply, then we will take further steps, up to taking them, taking legal consequences against the property owner for violation of now our municipal code.
Also, there is the registry. And part of the idea of the registry was to provide a resource to neighbors, that if your neighbor is hosting a short-term rental, and you, and there's something going on, it's loud, there's too much light, it's a resource for you to be able to resolve this issue with your neighbor before having to call the police on them.
Well, I mean, can I continue for a sec? The tension was mentioned here. You are putting all neighbors in a contentious situation here, which we're trying to avoid altogether. So I think the idea of the registry, or that people have issues with this, is really the notification, but you're also, we want fairness here. You don't want neighbors setting up neighbors. We're trying to make this a pleasant place to live, and it disturbs me that certain people are here tonight to say it's not. So the negative situations here, if we're going to go down this road, and put in all these ordinance and stuff, I want to make sure they work, because that's the whole idea. If you're not registered, you're going to be fined. If you are registered, and you have abuses, then you're going to be fined. So public safety is our first and most important issue here, and...
That's correct. I mean, what we're trying to do is give you the tools to regulate the situation. Now, there are good actors,
Right.
and there are people who abide by the rules even without the need for this ordinance. And they can go on, we would like them to register. We want to know, well, one of the reasons we want them to register is for the purpose of the TOT tax. We need to know who is engaged in this business in the residential area, and we have a right to know. And I, you know, I do, I feel sorry that they feel as if they're being treated, you know, as sex offenders. This is a whole different situation. This is a situation in which we want to know who is engaged in this business in the city for purposes of being able to collect TOT, and for purposes of being able to ensure appropriate enforcement.
Appropriate enforcement, okay. So our last budget had a full-time code enforcement officer. You mentioned it was only half-time. I want, how do we ensure these residents get accountability? Is there, my neighbors doing this, that we don't have a registry, this is, I appreciate all the people who are good hosts, and everything like that, as we get down this path here. How, what's the accountability? You, as staff, how are we going to know who is out there, Mr. Goldman's, you know, those people across the street, or wherever they are, who are abusing the system right now? Who's going to, you've got all this ordinance and stuff, who's going to be keeping track of all this?
So it will be in the community development department, and we will have a database as the ordinance prescribes.
Is there going to be a website? Is there a phone number I can call? How's this going to work? In the announcement that goes around to the neighbors, is there going to be a phone number on there, or how are we going to report things?
Yes, there'll be a phone number, and contact with our community development department to report violations, and also be able to apply for short-term rental ordinance. So this is, it's an enforcement issue, and as we continue to implement and develop the program, it will evolve. And as it evolves, we will absolutely enforce. We don't have the, well, we do have a tool right now, so everybody that stood up that's operating an Airbnb, if we don't adopt this ordinance, then without any action, we need to uphold the municipal code, and issue those people a notice of violation, because they're operating a business in a single-family or multifamily residence.
Is there going to be, if this ordinance passes, are you going to have an announcement, please register? What's your date?
So a whole rollout program, correct. Community education, a rollout program on our website, information material, work with MCTV, yes, we will have a public notice campaign. And more and more, as people bring illegal units to our attention, and we issue notice of violation, those notice of violations will include cease the activity, and provide the direction to come and apply for a permit to legalize their short-term rental unit.
So we, as a council, need to know how this is going to roll out, what numbers you're going to get here. We have to keep up. So if you're going to take fees, and registration, and all this stuff, the enforcement has to follow with that. So we're going to need a report, that how much money's coming in, how much enforcement is, we don't want the sheriff's apartment just being, you know, used for this purpose. So we clearly need to develop a system of enforceability that works, along with the sheriff's department, but that's like off-hours, and that kind of thing, so...
Nor do we. So I think the intent, when I mentioned the sheriff, that's only, that's for instance, that's, we intend that, we're hoping that we can do more enforcement through our code enforcement division out of the community development department. When I spoke of a half-time versus a full-time, that was last fiscal year, we did get, through the budget approval process, a full-time code enforcement officer, which we're recruiting for, or had just closed for. And so...
So right away, how are you going to, if somebody registers here, I'm sorry, Mr. Mingle, I'm going to use your letter here again, this neighbor, the house is dilapidated, the rooms, so in order to get the license, there has to be an inspection right away?
Correct.
Okay, well, they're not, it doesn't even sound like this person's going to pass inspection. What are you going to do?
We don't issue the permit.
We would not issue a permit.
Yeah, I know, but they're already operating.
No, then we...
Well, but there...
For the code enforcement, so that's why we have, we have our fire marshal here, we have our chief building official. So if we go in, in the inspection, and there are other violations, then we will send them a violation notice for electrical, plumbing, building, illegal construction. They have to comply prior, before we will issue a permit for a short-term rental ordinance.
Okay, so that's the dream world here, but if they're not...
I think that's...
They're not going to apply.
Then that's, then they're in violation of our ordinance.
And how is that going to work?
$1,000 a day, then if we find...
What, you're going to have a code enforcement out there every day going $1,000, $1,000?
Well, it may end up in the city attorney's office, and we can take it to court. I mean, but, but it would, it will be more regulated than it is now.
No, I get that. I want to make sure it works.
It's not, we don't, you know, give staff a chance.
We may issue 10 notices of violation a day. I don't know the degree of the violations until we adopt the ordinance and we start implementing it.
And through the chair?
Yes, sir.
What if the fines are not paid? Then what is the escalation from there?
If the fines are not paid, then we go to court and get them paid. You know, it's like code violate, you know, code violations now, the, most of the fines are much lower than what is set here. But we will, you know, if we start to accumulate fines, we'll revoke the permit, and we'll go to court, and make sure that they comply with the zoning rules applicable to that district.
And they be arrested?
Get them arrested.
Well, I mean, obviously, these violations are going on and on and on here.
This is a civil issue.
That's too bad.
Madam Mayor, but, but the point is, we will have tools to deal with the horrible stories you're hearing, that we don't have as effectively now.
I get that.
Okay.
I want to make sure this works. Mr. Hollibur, I'm sorry, continue.
Do you have more?
I interrupted you already.
No, I just have one quick question, but I have more. So I have a question right now. Do we have some type of a registry of business licenses in Millbrae, including home-based businesses?
Yes.
Okay, so this conceivably would be similar to what we already have. And presumably, if they're getting a business license, they would be on that home-based business license registry. So I agree that this is a good tool for being able to, you know, report this to the public, and to the city, and also to be able to then collect the TOT. I think it certainly never was the intention of this to be like a sex offender list, and I certainly hope that it's not viewed that way by the responsible hosts that we have here in Millbrae. I do have a couple of, I do agree with, I think, the mayor and Councilwoman Schneider on some of the recommendations from Commissioner Joe regarding the, let's see, oh, the parking. This is always a very tough issue. You know, I grew up in a neighborhood where most people parked on the streets, and it was never really a problem. And, you know, I visited friends and family, and parked on the streets when I've gone over there, and never had a problem. I think where it could be a problem is if this becomes a habitual issue, and because of that, I think having the parking restrictions is a good thing to include in this, in this ordinance.
Can I add something on that?
Yeah.
My question is, so the, I have long-term rentals in my neighborhood, with a lot of cars, and they're good neighbors. I don't have any problems here. How are you going to be able to distinguish that? I mean, somebody coming into the neighborhood might think, I mean, I know, I know my neighbors, so, and I know which homes are rented, and that's all good. But, and also the hip housing issue. Are we really going, somebody who's registered with hip housing, are they going to have to comply? to comply with this? Are we going, hip housing?
Short-term rental.
It's not, okay.
It's a resident.
It's a resident, okay. Thank you. Because the housing shortage is really bad. And we don't want to hurt them.
I'm like where you're going. Can I follow through on that?
I interrupted him, gives it same line?
No, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Soliva?
With regards to the rentals, for a second, we have somebody that is renting a piece of property that is in violation, and code enforcement's going to go into somebody else's house because they don't own the house?
So, it's a rental and they are applying for a short-term rental permit? They need the owner's, they need the owner's signature and approval. So, we won't, we won't inspect until we have the...
They're illegal. They're, they're violation. Because we have a regulation now that says we can go in there and have it, right away, we have to get the house inspected, and the tenant is going to allow for the city to go into a house they don't own?
So, we'll rent as part of the application process. So, when we receive the application, before community development signs off on it, we will go and inspect the home.
That's...
So, they apply and part of the application process...
But it's not their home you're inspecting. It's somebody else's home that they're renting that you're inspecting.
On the application process, we require the property owner's signature, the homeowner's signature.
Prior to the inspection?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just going backwards, when you were talking about if there's a bad actor, how do you go back and enforce an action? So, you can start citing them, and that's a monetary value. But, again, because all we're asking for is an owner's signature, there's no owner address on the application form. So, as a landlord myself, my tenant's lease now says you are not allowed to do any short-term rental, period, and it's cause for losing their security deposit and losing their residency. Thank you, City of Millbrae, for teaching me what I needed to put in my own tenant's lease agreement. But, here, you've got a, somebody renting a house and they think it's great fun, or the house next door to me where there's a young adult, the family owns it, lives in another country, they're not monitoring it. She wouldn't disappear, but she might. When I tried to track the owner, it took very expensive letters back to China or back to Seoul, Korea, to try to track down the owners of this. It can get very expensive for a neighborhood trying to defend itself. But, back to the, the owner doesn't really know what's going on. The leaseholder does this, they start accruing all of these fines, and they just leave. It becomes more than their security deposit. How have we enforced, we've shut something down, I guess. We're never going to recover the $5,000 or $10,000, but it's gone. Okay, so that's one of the enforcement mechanisms.
There's also a series of, in the application that's attached, attachment four, there's a series of, for example, short-term residential rental registration, if you read that, under penalty of perjury, signatures, authorization of the property owner as well as the tenant. We have a waiver and indemnity provision. We have a short-term residential rental grant waiver and indemnity that, per the application process, the, both, in a case where the home is being rented, both the renter and the property owner must sign. Under penalty of perjury.
Okay, this is really heavy-handed and completely out of my experience. Can you put a tag on their credit? Can this be something that hurts their credit, or that's a different mechanism? Okay.
One of the mechanisms that we've included in the ordinance is to require tenants to put down $1,000 deposit. And the $1,000 deposit is basically the amount of the maximum one-time fine that the city can levy. So, that, there's always something there that the city can recover against. For a homeowner, that's not, that's not necessary because the property is there. If necessary, if the worst comes to worst, we can put a lien on the property. So, there's always, whether the permittee is a tenant or a homeowner, there's always something for the city to recover against.
So, could you, if I might?
Sure, I just, way back, I had two more issues, then I'm done.
I'm sorry, oh, okay. You just mentioned that you came up with the, how, what's the basis for that $1,000 fee? It's the one violation?
So, yes.
Or is that the enforcement, I thought?
So, for a tenant who is applying for a short-term residential rental permit, the tenant must put down $1,000 as a deposit in addition to the permit application fee. And the thousand, one of the purposes for that deposit is so that if the tenant does violate the ordinance, they can't just disappear, the $1,000 is there so the city can collect against something. Once the, at the end of their, the term of their permit, that deposit is refundable, assuming it hasn't been collected against.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Holliver?
So, I'm actually a bit sensitive to that issue, and I, there were some emails and letters that came in about the $1,000 deposit being too high, and I could see how that could be quite burdensome for some tenants, especially those that are just trying to make the mortgage or just trying to not, you know, just trying to pay the rent if they're, if they're a tenant themselves. I would be okay with reducing that amount or perhaps tying it maybe to the number of bedrooms in the, in the home. The theory behind that being that, you know, a one-bedroom or studio is probably a lower risk to the neighborhood and to the property than, say, a four- or five-bedroom house would be. I don't know what my colleagues think about that suggestion.
What kind of risk? What do you mean by lower risk?
Well, presumably, a property with one bedroom would be less likely, I would imagine, to have, you know, a huge party or something like that than, you know, a five-bedroom house being rented out.
Was there an earlier discussion as to some waivers or some accommodations?
This was a comment that came up in the public hearings that a number of hosts felt that the $1,000 deposit might be prohibitive. And in this most recent version of the ordinance, we did include some discretion for the director as part of the permit process to, for good cause, either increase or decrease that deposit. So, if we have a party house, say, that that's been a chronic problem, we could potentially increase the deposit if there's a...
I'm sorry, would that be a step before revoking the permit?
So, this is, this is in the application process.
Okay, so, for example, if one of the houses that's already come to our attention at this point, we could potentially charge more than a $1,000.
Right, so, for example, if there, if there was a house that had two violations in the past year, not enough to, to, to deny the permit, and we were interested in working with the owner or the long-term tenant to, to allow them to continue renting. One, one thing that we could do is require that they put down a $2,000 deposit. Or conversely, if we had a, a rent, a host who had, has a history of good behavior, and we could, the director would have discretion to require a lower deposit.
We don't know who the, who the good people are at this point, other than those who've said so at these meetings.
Yeah, can I, yes, because we have been alerted to several homes that are very disruptive right now. Is there a way for us, the information that we currently have from some residents who have shown up multiple times now and are still being disrupted? Should we also look at law enforcement responses to homes? Can the sheriff's department help us out along those lines? Because I don't want to give a, I don't want to start this whole process again for some poor neighbor who's already been violated, shall we say? It's just not fair that those, the abusers right now should be shut down because this is not appropriate. So, along those lines, as we go through this process, we don't want to be giving to people who are, we've been notified already, are abusing the process. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Holliver, continue.
And then, one other comment that was suggested by one or more planning commissioners about smoking should be prohibited in short-term residential rentals. I think I would agree with that recommendation as well. I don't know what my colleagues think, but...
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, and it could be, you know, it's not just for the neighbors, but also for potential guests there. It could be a nuisance to them if it was a home that had been smoked in properly and recently, and then they didn't know about it.
Does Air, what does?
Are we going to infringe the rule? Or, I mean, we're giving them...
I'm kind of, well, I'm kind of curious, does Airbnb have certain regulations now? That's just one company.
So, we're giving, we're not setting the rules to how you run this Airbnb or this...
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental. We're giving, we're allowing it in our city, we're regulating, we're not going to set the rules. What does smoking have to do with the regulations of how somebody runs a rental?
Well, it's a public health issue, and it's an issue to potential guests if it's a home that's been smoked in.
So, you're going to tell them they can, they can...
And they might not know about it when they get there, and then they don't have anywhere else to go.
I have a problem, I don't have a problem with no smoking in all of the leases. I do have no smoking in the leases, but it's at the discretion of the property owner. It's not at the discretion of the city that...
Well, the cities, it seems like the majority of the council here wants to make it, if we're going to go through this process, wants to regulate that.
Regulate?
That whoever opens their homes up to short-term rentals has to notify the person that's coming in, a person or persons, that smoking is not permitted. You'll be disrupting the health of your neighbors.
It's like, you know, in a restaurant or something like that, it's...
That's, that's getting a little bit too regulated. I was almost swaying.
How about legal counsel? Legal counsel, have you heard of anything like this? Was it...
I believe that, that there, that smoking is prohibited in a number of different businesses. I don't know that there's any, anything that would make it illegal for us to prohibit smoking. I think enforcement would be difficult.
So, we could try.
So, if I could give you, there's 900 in-home businesses. We don't tell...
In 2013, when I looked at the list, there were 900.
There's 567, I don't know how many there are. But, we don't tell them, there's no smoking in your business.
But, wait, you just told us you have, your leases have no smoking.
Through the owners.
I think this is a little bit different because this is, it's not just somebody sitting at their computer or working on spreadsheets, it's, people are coming in and out of the property.
I disagree.
Okay, you can disagree. Can I just, one sec? Did you have another one? Okay, please.
Well, this is on the same subject, because I actually had that question, and I think we have the gentleman in the room that was concerned about the house next door, smoking pot outside with a three-year-old next door. I have a parent with COPD, so even a little bit of smoke can trigger an asthma attack which can trigger a trick. So, it is a health issue. But, I was curious, airlines used to allow smoking in part of it, and they finally got wise and banned it entirely. Hotels have moved in that direction with big fines for people who smoke. For my property, it's the same thing. If you smoke, you lose part of your security deposit, period. I don't know what I, I guess what I'd like to know is, we've talked about it, if in your situation, the smoking next door, you call it's a nuisance, X number of nuisances means you lose your license. But, for those of you fighting that health risk, it shouldn't, 10 complaints, you're still going to the hospital every time you're breathing smoke. How do we, how do we arrange that nuisance? Because, again, I think this is hard to enforce. Your visitors, your guests are going to go outside.
My thought process is you include it in your ordinance, then whoever comes in is alerted. Because even if you have, so we're talking about structures. So, that's not to say, I'm hopeful if it's put in the ordinance here, then it deters the people from walking outside, which also gets in to the neighbor's home here. So, if you kind of have spelled it out in your ordinance, hopefully, people will not then...
Excuse me, we could put no alcohol, no pot-smoking.
I'm not going that far.
Then we wouldn't have parties. I mean, come on. You, you can't tell people what...
What they can do in their homes. I mean, I, I don't, I, I think you're coming up to a situation where whoever owns the home can smoke in the home, but if they bring someone in for Airbnb, that person can't smoke. Right now, the law is that places of employment, you're prohibited from smoking in places of employment. And that, that really is the extent of the law. You may have watched the City of Belmont a while back go through the throes of trying to regulate what people can do in their homes. I mean, that's really where you are right now, and I...
And I'm not going there.
I, I think it's more problematic.
Concerns, what, what can we do? I'm worried about the neighbors, the...
What about outside smoking? Inside's one thing, outside's another.
But, it makes it worse when you go outside.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can you prevent it from being...
Can you prevent it from being outside, but what they do inside their home, because the smoke stays inside, kind of, instead of crossing over the fence?
Let's stay in terms of this...
I think it's better to have it in the ordinance than to not have it in the ordinance. But, I, I agree, it's going to be difficult to enforce, and it's very possible that they may just go outside and smoke on the sidewalk, and they're not on the property anymore.
In the car?
Wouldn't you rather have them inside than outside?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I, I think you're really getting into an, I...
Okay, we can take it out.
Getting there, that could be subject to challenge and certainly is not enforceable.
All right, we're into first steps.
If you're worried about enforcement and...
I'm worried about enforcement all around.
Let, let, I would suggest for the first round that we kind of stick to the issues that we really have heard are occurring in certain situations. The parking, the lighting, the behavior that is disturbing to the peace and quiet of our residential areas.
Ms. Soliva?
So, sorry to ruck the boat here, and I think that that's 100% correct, right on with the quiet enjoyment of everybody. But, I hate to punish those that are doing this right. So, I have a little bit of out-of-the-box idea, surprise, surprise. What happens if we, if we know that there's approximately 70 that have been counted for that are, we think that we've been informed that are in our city, 70 Airbnbs? What happens if we allowed for the first 50 that are doing this, that have come forward and have shared this, to be exempt from any $1,000 fee? And we put a cap at that so we can weed out slowly instead of taking it all on at once and trying to enforce, you know, going through this registration all at once? Like, if we get 300 applications, let's say, if we took the first 50 and we checked their records of quiet enjoyment and a successful process of which they're making extra money for, and we allowed them to, we were gracious enough to waive the fees on their, the first 50. And that would include a lot of the people that were here tonight. And it would also, if we had a cap, would allow us to put the other ones out of business that didn't, because we didn't grant the, grant the fees to.
I didn't get your cap thing here.
So, if we allow 50 people to come forward, we put this ordinance through, and 50 people...
There's going to be a stampede at the door.
Well, but a stampede of which, there's five of them here that we could stamp really quick.
Well, I think...
And the ones that wouldn't allow us, after 50, we'd know where to go, because we have five of them that have complaints already.
So, maybe, I mean, I see where you're going, which could be a nice idea that you have a small, we want to encourage people to register, correct? So, using it as encouragement.
And reward those that have not taken advantage of the situation.
So, I think, you know, we're talking about the $1,000, which is a deposit, not a fee. Maybe we could look at not requiring that deposit until they get a violation. And we go out, we confirm the violation, and then they must then put a deposit in.
I don't like that one.
Just brainstorming, Mary.
I know. I, I, I see it as a positive to try to get people to register. Again, my primary focus here is public safety. We want to really get those abusers right now and as quickly as possible. So, we're, how do we do both?
So, let me, so, so the fee is $100, and that's a permit processing fee. And that, and then, as I just said, that $1,000 is a deposit, it's not a fee. People would get their deposit if there's no violations and there's no collection of any fines that, that would be required. So, just, just wanted to clarify that.
And the $1,000 only applies if you're applying to rent a non-hosted unit or if you're a tenant who is applying to...
Say that again?
So, the $1,000 fee only applies to tenants, so not property owners, and persons who want to rent their unit non-hosted. So, if you're, if you just want to rent a hosted unit, there's no deposit.
The professor that came up, he, we would not apply the $1,000 fee to that.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's, it's incentivized.
Sorry for that.
Okay. All right, people.
Yeah.
Yes.
Apply. Sorry. I was just going to suggest, I mean, I think the, the notion is to identify the riskier situations, which is the non-hosted, or the sub-rental, having tenants rent. I think those are more highly risk and have them pay.
Go ahead.
And if there's somebody who claims that they're only doing hosted rentals and then we find out that they're doing non-hosted rentals, that would be a violation, correct? Okay. And, yeah.
My last comment was something that hasn't come up, other than the Lombardi one, which is there's a, a short-term rental, the users of that property trash neighbors' property next door. And they have to either pay for cleanup or pay for repairs. Cleanup, we don't like to do it, but we, it's easy. But if they break a fence or they do something like that, there's a cost. Is there any remedy in what we're doing to the people living next door to one of these for that type of damage, other than forcing them to have to go to small claims court? No way to?
Well, I think it would be a violation first of the permit. Secondarily, then you'd still have to go against the property owner.
Vandalism.
So in, in terms of leaving a mess, I think that is prohibited by the, by the operating rules. And, and the, if the, the renters come and they, and they, they make a mess and just leave, the city can fine the, fine either the renters or the, the permittees. And conceivably, the city could go and, and clean up the, the mess and, and use the, the fine to, to pay for that. In terms of actual property damage, I mean, the city is indemnified against property damage, but we don't, we don't have an indemnity for neighbors.
Okay. I think we need to act and take a first step here. My concern is how quickly this, this is, how quickly can something happen here? And how can we be accountable to the residents and see if this is working or it's not working?
Well, first of all, this is an ordinance and it takes two readings in order for you to enact. And then there will be a 30-day period after publication of the notice before it becomes the law of the city. So, I mean, we have time to get our act in order. I hear you say you want to roll out, you want staff to be prepared, to have a program in place.
This is the last meeting of July and we're not in August. So I would like to have a special meeting.
Well, we are having a special meeting.
There's a continued meeting on the 30th.
We do.
Yeah, we are, we've set up a continued meeting for the purpose of, of this matter, as well as another matter that will come before you later tonight.
Okay.
So, but I think we need some clarity over maybe some of the, the areas that you would like to amend, what's before you.
I think I heard clearly, we would like to put in something about non-smoking. Again, we're trying here, it's all new.
I would not be in favor of that.
Okay, there's one aspect there. Everybody else? I'm seeing the other four council members nodding.
We could put that in the operating rules.
Okay. All right. What else, people? As to far as to what was written?
Most of, most of my comments were clarification. If I look at Jean-Joe's comments, which were specific to portions of the ordinance, it's just clarification. So Jean's saying, let's make sure what. Considering separate violations means, just clarification of terms. Mine would be what happens if there's a non-hosted and 20, 60 minutes, nobody shows up? What can code enforcement do or not do? Let's just make sure that's really clear so that whoever the non-hosted Airbnb understands if somebody's going to enter their property.
So one, one clarification. We, we did remove a provision of the ordinance that was present in the, in the previous version that would allow code enforced, or law enforcement officers to enter the unit with only a reasonable suspicion of wrongdoing. And we, we removed that provision because, and we, we talked to the, we, we talked to the, the chief and he said that, that the, the tool they really wanted to, to be able to enforce the ordinance effectively was the authorized agent to be, to be present at the property. And that he didn't really think that having that extra step of being able to enter with only a reasonable suspicion of wrongdoing would, would be a substantial benefit to them. And, and so on that recommendation, we, we removed it from the ordinance. One other measure that, that we took, though, was to require that for non-hosted units, that there be two authorized agents. So if for whatever reason, the first authorized agent is unavailable or not picking up his, up their phone, there's, there's another number that, that we can call to get somebody else at, at the property, so we have a backup. If it becomes a chronic problem where, where the authorized agents just aren't showing up, we have monetary fines that we can levy against the permittee and ultimately, we can revoke the permit.
So just using the Lombardi Court example, is this sufficient that if the resident next door called about this party on a Friday night and the police come and say, oh, we can't enter? And then they call again on Saturday night and it's the same situation? There's no agent there, there's no agent around? Is, what have we done with this ordinance to stop that situation from happening? I'm a little, I'm tired, so I'm a little confused now.
So potentially, each, each of those instances where the authorized agent failed to show up is, is a violation of the ordinance and can, and we can fine the permittee. So you mentioned this was two incidents. On the third instance where this didn't happen, we would be able to revoke the permit.
And yet, the house next door still had to go through gunshots? I see the, our, our sheriff representative here. Can, can we fix, can we make sure that with this ordinance, we can fix that problem right away? The Lombardi Court problem? And any other party situation that goes like that?
Yeah, so I, I think that, that could happen in anything. So if, if a non-short-term rental home is having a party and gunfires go off and they turn off the lights and everybody's quiet, it, it's a law enforcement, legal.
Yeah, we, we were able to get in the night before because there are already avenues for us to get in. They were violating noise ordinances and they were being disruptive and causing a public. Causing a public nuisance. That's how I was able to get into the home.
I stand corrected then. I thought Paul had said that they called and were told they couldn't get in the home. But that's good that you got in there.
No, for every party that they've had a, a short-term lease, we've entered into.
Okay, thank you.
There's other parts of this ordinance that would help later on.
Okay, okay. How are we doing? All right. Can I move for this reading?
So you're moving to waive the reading, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance?
Yes.
With the clarifications that have been discussed?
Yes.
And when will we see those clarifications?
They will come back to you on July 30th. Hopefully, we will be closing this meeting to continue it to July 30th.
And I'm sorry, but we're going to really burden staff here to, we need to make sure that this is working. So when we get to that point, you're going to have to let us know accountability-wise, every, how, how many registered things are happening here? And for those who are not registering, how we're going to enforce that? Because it's becoming abusive.
So we will bring back, I will bring back quarterly reports to the council and keep you updated on the progress as we launch this new ordinance and program.
Ms. Schneider?
Just clarification, we vote tonight, we vote Monday. It still takes 30 days, right?
Yeah.
So August 29th would be the.
So that gives a little bit of August where in theory, we're off to get some of the processes designed? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can I have your votes, please? We still have a couple items to go over.
I'm, I'm not going to be here on the 30th to vote for the second reading.
That's okay. If you want to vote for this one, you can. Your loss, but hey.
The council unanimously voted to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance, amending chapters 3.30, 5.100, 10.05 of Milbury Municipal Code and adding chapter 7.3 to Milbury Municipal Code to allow and provide for a regulation of short-term rental, resident, of short-term residential rental and adopting a resolution establishing a fee for short-term residential rental permit to include non-smoking to short-term rental units.
Thank you very much.
And it passed unanimously?
It passed unanimously.
Introduced unanimously.
Introduced unanimously, thank you.
Thank you to staff for all their hard work and effort. And thank you for all the residents who have been helping us through this process.
Now we do the resolution. One more vote.
Oh, you need one more?
That was a motion.
What's the resolution we do the second time? This was a motion to introduce the ordinance. When we bring it back, we will pass the resolution. We don't need to pass it now. In fact, it will have no effect until the ordinance is enacted.
All right, getting late here. Let's get moving. I know one lady out there's got twins she's got to get home to. Okay, item 14, designation of voting delegates. No, no break. Come on, sit down, please. We got to get through these. Designation voting delegates of up to two alternates, 2018 League of California Cities. This is out of town and I know probably Council Vice Mayor Lee has to go. Who else is going? Is it Long Beach? Where is it?
Long Beach.
Long Beach? Who else is going to be there?
I'm considering going.
You're considering going. Ms. Lee, are you going to be there for sure?
I'm going to be there, but if Councilwoman Snyder wants to be.
Well, if you're going to be there for sure, she's not sure yet. So as an alternate, why don't you guys just let me know? You're going to be there for sure, so I'll vote for you as the original and Ms. Schneider as the alternate. If you cannot be there, could you let us know, please?
It all depends on what's happening at home.
Our thoughts and prayers are with you. Okay. We got it? I've nominated Vice Mayor Lee and the alternate, Ms. Schneider, for our delegates.
The council approved unanimously to vote Vice Mayor Lee and alternate Snyder to attend the League of Cities Annual Conference.
Thank you. Item 15, last and final item. Ms. Hildebrandt, nice to see you. As they are readying, readying that, item 15, consider adopting a resolution determining public interest and necessity demands the restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center and introduction of an ordinance ordering submission of a proposition of incurring, incurring bonded debt to the qualified voters of the city of Milbury at the general municipal election to be held November 6, 2018 for the purposes of financing the restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center. Hello, are you ready?
I'm ready, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm happy to keep you up to date on the Milbury Recreation Center restoration project. So we'll start by giving you a brief update from Group 4. Andrea is here to brief you on where we're at today in terms of design and community outreach for the design of the Milbury Recreation Center. We'll talk about the funding plan that has been developed and, and recommended through the Rebuild Subcommittee. We've, we've done some public opinion research to, to bring us to a proposal in, in terms of how to fund portions of this project and election process. And tonight's recommended actions, which the mayor just reviewed, are a resolution of public interest and necessity and an ordinance ordering submission of proposition of incurring bonded debt. Apologize, our technology's a little wonky this evening.
Technical difficulties? We can keep our fingers crossed because somebody run the big lotto in San Jose. Maybe they're a Milbury resident. It wasn't me either, dang it.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Pleased to report to you.
Introduce yourself there.
Outreach and design update. My name's Andrea Gifford. I'm with Group 4 Architecture, the consultant working on the restoration, the new, restorative recreation facility. So we wanted to just come back and announce the completed round one outreach. We're, we're fortunate to touch base with just shy of 1,000 residents through a variety of different events, including the online survey, a farmer's market, outreach at the Taylor Middle School, as well as smaller events like the self-help for elderly lunch program, including the, the city's movie night as well, which we will also be attending in future outreach events. Through that outreach process, we collected a variety of different, asked the community about a variety of different design values. And the summary slide up here just shows some of the preferred images in the ranking order that we received through the variety of different outreach events. And so we'll be using these design values as we launch into the next round of design options. We also went out to the community and asked about preferred site design values. And again, these are the ranking of the top six images that polled really well. And we'll be using these images again as we start looking at the site and landscape plans throughout the next phases. And here's just a nice summary slide of a variety of those, both building and site issues and really how we're going to be using these images and sort of the themes that we've been hearing, such as making sure that the community recreation, new recreation facility is opening and engaging to the park and current site, a variety of outdoor rooms, obviously to take advantage of the, the unique site that we have, both on the ground floor as well as the second floor. Making sure that the massing and the scale of the facility fits within the park and neighboring community, looking at the massing and the materials that we're reusing, really looking at a nice entry focal point in the new facility, as well as an inviting entry for all. And then when we look in the site, making sure that the building and landscape is integrated within its park setting, that there's wonderful interactive public spaces, spaces to play, as well as passive spaces within the park and a really nice engaging landscape. And so just to bring to you some of the next steps. So starting August 1st, we'll be launching our second round of outreach. We'll be bringing up the online survey August 1st, as well as a number of intercept and kiosk, kiosk pop-ups, including of having a kiosk here at the current community center in City Hall. We'll be going again to the farmer's market, back to the elderly lunch for self-help. We will be at the Carriage House ribbon cutting, the movie night on August 7th. That's at Central Park with the community festival. Going to the Friends of the Library book sale and Historical Society sale. We want to come back to Taylor Middle School at their back-to-school night. So we engage both students and parents, go to the movie night at Central Park, where we'll be watching Cars 3. And then, as well as the Milbury Art and Wine Festival at the beginning of September and the back-to-school event at St. Dunston. And then we'll be concluding the round two outreach with an open house and community workshop on September 18th. And then bringing this to the Planning Commission and City Council in the fall of 2018 as well. So a variety of ways that the community can get engaged in the second round of outreach and concluding that hopefully right here in the fall. So stay tuned. I believe a mailer, a postcard will be going to, out to all residents. And so the community workshop will be highlighted there to help inform the community of when that will take place. Some of the things, we just wanted to briefly preview what we will be sharing with the community during the second outreach. And the first here is the site plan. And what's nice to note on the site plan here in the red dashed line is the limit of work that we're proposing for the Phase 1 bond, 30 million bond measure that we'll be talking about later. And that includes resurfacing the existing parking lot that's off Laurel. And that includes resurfacing the existing parking lot that's off Laurel, the new recreation center that will restore the community center services, as well as a new parking lot off Lincoln Circle, and all the associated landscaping and outdoor rooms and plazas in conjunction with that. And so the red dashed line indicates what would be included in this preliminary phase of work. We also will be gathering input on the proposed floor plans that we received feedback on in the first round. And so here is the first floor plan, as well as the second floor plan, and then getting community feedback on a variety of different design options that we've started to create. And so you can see some sneak peek images here, but hopefully come out to the community events where you'll see additional images and be able to provide input on the variety of different options that we're showing that relate to the massing and the scale of the building, as well as the different materials that we're proposing be implemented on the new recreation center. So stay tuned and hope to see you all around any of our kiosk and pop-ups. And if you can't make it, please visit the online survey, which you'll be able to find on the city's website.
So question, will that postcard that goes out have that information of all the different?
The postcard will be to alert you to the community workshop on September 18th and direct you to the city's website, which will announce all the different events that we'll be going to, as well as the online survey.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, were there any questions? Yes, Ms. Snyder?
Just a question. I see you're going to the, one of the senior lunches. You've already gone to the senior committee's lunch, but they do meet on the second August, second Wednesday in August, if you wanted more feedback now that you're farther along. And the Milbury Lions host the Milbury Machines Car Show on August 18th. I don't know if you've been asked, but if you want more, we get about 5,000, I think it's about 5,000 people at that, including many Milbury car aficionados who have all day to stand around with their cars.
Yeah, I think there's, as consultants, we're contracted to do a variety of things, but I know the recreation staff will be trying to do additional outreach, and I think we'll definitely have talked about those events and the opportunities for city staff to attend and, if anything, set up kiosks that people can engage with as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hollibur?
Thank you very much, and things are really looking great on these initial design ideas. And I've had the pleasure of working with you and your staff on the, and several of our community leaders on the advisory committee. I know that you are also working on recreation centers in our two neighboring cities, San Bruno and Burlingame. And while our site plan is, you know, the first and second floor phase plan is mostly complete at this point, I'm wondering if there is some value in perhaps trying to arrange some type of a meeting between the three cities, either at the staff level or at maybe perhaps the mayor, to try to see if there are any ways that we could perhaps collaborate with our neighbors and if there are any types of services. And maybe this is more programmatic than, you know, the actual building itself, but ways to collaborate and ways to reduce redundancies if possible.
Yeah, and I think we've had those discussions with city staff, particularly the recreation staff and the manager and superintendent, and they have interest in that, and I think additional city leadership would benefit from that as well. So we're happy, and we do bring that knowledge hopefully to all the teams, and we share that with all the different user groups, as well as other community and recreation centers that we do, both state and national. So we try to make sure everyone's up to speed and communicating. And I know that's been talked with at city staff level, and I think there's an interest in reaching out, because it's a very unique time to have so many new facilities coming up in the...
And I think we should try to take advantage of that opportunity as best as we can.
I agree.
And make sure we get the best one.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Hildebrandt?
Thank you. From here, we wanted to talk about the estimated cost. This is, this was presented to you, I believe it was on June 12th, so Group 4 refined their cost estimates. Again, this is Phase 1 of a master plan, which your council adopted around February of this year. So as Andrea depicted, there's a boxed area, some parking lot upgrades, and the new recreation center is what's included in this phase. These costs do include some potential escalation. You know, as time goes on, the costs of construction keep growing, and that's a concern at the staff level and at the subcommittee level, that we're, you know, we're eager to keep this moving and get started. So recognizing that the subcommittee really pulled together to look at some funding options, how can we bring this together, reduce the burden to the taxpayers? We do have some, we did receive insurance settlement. Again, that insurance settlement was for a building that was nearly 50 years old, so it's not sufficient to build a new, more modern facility. We have a contribution from a developer. We did redirect some capital project funds that were originally allocated towards the former community center before the fire. We are also looking at the sale of surplus property and potentially looking at capital contributions from operators. The surplus property is still in a due diligence phase. We're looking at property titles, what process we need to go through. We may need a public vote for that as well, for Schultz Park, and potential operators such as Ford, a daycare, maybe as a nonprofit, they might have some additional funding opportunities that aren't available to us. So we'll do that through an RFI process, request for interest. We'll also be looking to the county to see if they'll participate in some way. That's on my next slide. And so a critical component is to consider a general obligation bond of about $12 million to fill that remaining gap. The, this is a property tax. It's estimated at about $8.70 per 100,000 of assessed value, so where your property's assessed by the county assessor for your property taxes. So before taking this step, we did some public opinion research. As you'll recall, you contracted this with Lou Edwards and FM3. They did this in late June and early July through both online surveys and telephone polling. They contacted about 300 voters in the City of Milbury. I think a really valuable finding is that an increasing number of these voters feel that the city is generally headed in the right direction. They're finding in other communities that this is actually declining due to some significant issues facing other communities. So the fact that it's growing is a really big plus for our community, and we were happy to have that information. We also found that approximately 70% of those polled would vote yes on a potential ballot measure. Again, the polling was for a $12 million general obligation bond. And they identified some community priorities, including a modern community center that meets current codes, access for people with disabilities, all funds spent locally, and independent audits, all funds solely for the purpose of restoring the center, restoring space for senior programs and youth programs. These questions were asked in different ways to kind of get different insights into our community. So you'll see, for example, that there's quite a bit of response in youth programs to two different types of questions. But these are all important programs, important to our community, and currently being provided a reduced level through the interim center. So again, the real key finding was that respondents are more positive about the city's direction than when we polled in, I think it was the December timeframe. The top priorities are restored recreation center with basic safety, accessibility, and space for senior programs, and accountability requirements, which are proposed to be included in the measure. Respondents are also interested in emergency preparedness and space for programs, especially those that serve seniors and youth. So if council decides to move forward, the next steps are second reading of this ordinance to place a general obligation bond on the November 2018 ballot and a resolution to consolidate election, those we proposed at the July 30th meeting, which is a continued meeting of the July 10th meeting. On August 10th, this ordinance must be received by Samatteo County. On August 17th, rebuttals to arguments against the measure are required to be submitted, and by August 27th, an impartial analysis that's prepared by the city attorney is submitted. So again, we're asking the council to consider adopting a resolution determining public interest and necessity demands the restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center and introduction of an ordinance ordering the submission of a proposition of incurring bonded debt to the qualified voters of the City of Milbury at the general municipal election to be held on November 6, 2018 for the purpose of financing the restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center. I'm happy to take any more questions.
Counsel, I do have one speaker slip. Okay. Mr. Boyd, would you like to speak, sir?
My first question is, I've looked everywhere, and I haven't seen where insurance is paying anything on this.
Yes, sir. It is in here. We have, where's the slide here? Can you bring the slide up again so Mr. Boyd can see? Hang on one second.
My address, 758 Berkshire Drive, Milbury.
Oh, no, 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 you're fine with your address. We're going to show you where the insurance money is.
Why would we only get 6.2 million if it's going to cost 30 million to build it?
Okay, we're going to answer that one here for you right now.
I'm a retired insurance adjuster. One of my primary clients was the City of Samatteo, Samatteo County, that is, and I did a lot of school claims. And I don't know how many square feet are involved, but if there's 10,000 square feet, that's $3,000 per square foot. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
We will gladly explain that to you, sir.
Okay.
Did you have another question?
Yeah. All insurance on cities is blanket insurance. So if you have, you know, $500 million worth of buildings, there's no limit per building. It's a blanket up to the amount of the policy. So the insurance company couldn't say, it's $6 million, and, you know, that's all we're going to give you.
Along those lines?
And just one last point. Insurance always pays the actual cash value, the replacement cost, less depreciation, and that can be recovered after you rebuild. The statute has been blown terribly. I was wondering, you know, normally you have 180 days to replace the building to get the replacement cost that they've held back, the depreciation. I was wondering why this hasn't moved forward in all that time? They have, basically, it's usually 180 days from the date of their last payment, and this thing was like years ago.
No, no, we got all, we got all that.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to fill you in. Anything else on that one?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, Deanna, who wants to go to the details here? We had two, we're insured through A-Bag, which, okay, yeah. So, and it was the building itself. Go ahead.
So we did have property insurance on city property, but each property is, it was replacement value, and we were replacing a 1969 building. And not a building that, I mean, this is state-of-the-art, and the building costs here are reflective of what is occurring in 2018. So we were able to get 6.2 million, and that, we were convinced after much back and forth with A-Bag, that was just about the best we were going to do.
And that was for the insurance on the building itself? Yeah, we got second opinions, and this stuff in the building, and then there was an additional payout for the ongoing operations. So the temporary facilities you see in the parking lot there, that was a whole different amount of money we got?
Yeah.
So we can keep operating going forward here.
We got some operational coverage too, in addition, but the 6.2 million was put into a building fund toward the replacement cost. You'll recall, it was a one-story building. This is, this is two. I mean, and costs of construction today are enormous, just enormous.
So the goal in this new building is to really provide for the increased population, again, providing a modern facility that's going to meet all the new earthquake standards, electrical and safety standards, and provide access, as was said, to people with disabilities. We're going to make sure everything's spent just on this. So the focus is this one building and the outlined area there to, so that we can, again, restore the recreation center. So we're doing the best. And this one will be, you know, probably have cameras too, so something like that never happens again. So we're hopeful there. We hope, we hope that answers your questions. Yeah, fire suppression, things like that, all the state-of-the-art stuff, as long as that there. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Yes, Ms. Snyder, did you?
Questions and then a couple of concerns. What do we mean, I read the survey results, what does it meant by spent all funds locally? I thought that that meant that all the funds collected will be spent on the, what I've been calling the community center, which now we're calling the recreation center, but all funds will be spent on the recreation center. That's not the same thing as spending all funds locally, at least in contractual terms. We could hire a contractor from Timbuktu. That's not hiring locally or spending locally. So what does that mean?
In public opinion research, they look to a lot of kind of generic things. So there's a lot of perception that funds are taken by the state or that we're replacing money that's really going somewhere else. So when we, when those items are polled, we're just helping to make sure, we're communicating the messages that are important to people. So, you know, we're all living and breathing local government, and we know what's going on here today, and that money is segregated in a fund, and it's only spent on the community center, but the external public may not know that. So the polling, the opinion firms are looking to understand what the public understands about something, about a project like this.
Okay, I mean, as I said, it could, to me, mean two different things. So if we're going to try for complete transparency, and we're trying to show that we've got to get 66.7% of the voting population, I think everything that we do has to be in the least amount of, I guess, jargon as possible.
I think, if I may, every dollar stays in Milbury for the recreation center. It doesn't go to a regional recreation program for, it stays here.
Let's modify statements like that to say that. The other thing that I thought it was interesting when I read through it, the commercial kitchen was one of the lowest of the issues, and yet probably what the public doesn't understand with the commercial kitchen, you can have better ability to rent the facility for weddings and things like that, which actually bring in money to help cover the cost of operating it. So again, it's fine, I don't think that's, it's not going to change my vote tonight, but when we're working with the public and we're trying to get them to buy into this, if we can make sure they understand what these things actually mean, what they mean in practice for something like that. And especially because I had a number of Lions tell me they want a kitchen that they can cook in, as opposed to a kitchen that they can only warm up food in. So that's one of those differences in there.
If I may, I'd like to add, there are some word limitations that make some of the wording in a ballot pretty wonky, and there's also some restrictions and things about what's required to be said in the language. So that does create some issue.
I appreciate that. I'm not talking about this in the ballot language. I'm just saying in our education, our outreach materials, let's try to make it, let's try to help the public understand all of the other things. It's not just, hey, we're going to have a childcare center. It's that we can get county money to help run the childcare center. It's an additional service that we can help bring revenue in. Whatever the situation might be, let's make sure that we're going into that kind of detail. There'd be a lot of voters who will never read it, but there'll be voters who will read it. So we're kind of looking for that audience. Schultz Park, I heard that there are members of the public that are concerned about the sale of Schultz Park. I'm the one that brought it up two weeks ago, that we not lose a piece of a neighborhood history. And I actually went up to the park after the Rotarian Park dedication, and there is that gate there. So maybe it might help at some point between now and when the ballots drop that we have a community walk. And if the decision is to sell part of it for housing but keep part of it for a small, what I would call a neighborhood park or a tot lot, maybe that will help the public small, what I would call a neighborhood park or a tot lot, maybe that will help the public understand a little bit more about Schultz Park. The, I have a concern or a question about who, what is the process we're going to use for choosing the people who will sit on the oversight committee? Because that's really critical, and Milbury has, Milbury's a little insular, and I'd like to see some new faces on there, some new skill sets in there, instead of the same old, same old faces on that. And that will, I don't know if we choose the oversight committee prior to the ballots dropping or not, but then maybe there's some discussion of what kind of skill set we want on the oversight committee. To the public, when I lived in Mountain View, several school bond measures failed, and how the bond measures finally passed was that they gave tours to those of us who are regulars who didn't have kids in school, who saw what the school looked like, saw how horrible it was, and they provided an oversight committee with specific functional areas, so that you knew you'd have an accountant, you knew you had somebody who was an estimator, you had these various skill sets that can make sure that the money is spent properly. Another concern, in the, where the money is coming from, it says the 2.88 million that is coming from the developer of TOD 2, and yet, we've had petitions against that developer. I've already heard rumors that people are going to fight it through the planning commission process. So as much as I'd like to think that that's money we have in our pocket, can someone explain to me, if it doesn't pass Planning Commission Design Review, what happens to that 2.88 million?
I believe the project has passed. Design Review, I mean, hopefully will negotiate through whatever the public, again, might say. The, the project, they just need to work, like, like any project, the design aspects, the planning commission and the public have some say in, but the, the project itself has passed.
Yeah, the project has been approved. I mean, it will, it will get through design review.
So whether there's another citizen petition or another email attack against a council person, this project is going forward?
There's a development agreement.
Correct.
That's been adopted and approved, and as the city attorney said, it's, it's just going through the development review process, which is tied to the process outlined in the development agreement.
Okay, you're making me feel more comfortable, then, that that 2.8 million, 88 million is actually, really, truly going to be there.
Yes.
I'm, I'd also, I mentioned this one, we had our one-on-one with Group Four and staff. The subcommittee stakeholder, apparently no minutes were taken. Again, that, to me, is a concern for transparency, but Group Four said that they did take notes, and I would, as somebody who feels all the way along have been on the outside of this project, I would like to see those. And you don't have to provide them to me necessarily, you are providing them to the community. So I'd love to see more of this documentation on the website. Again, we're going to have analytical people who want a lot of data before they vote on this, and then we're going to have people who are going to vote based on different My last concern is who signs the ballot measure? And I would prefer that that either be signed by the entire council, as opposed to any one council member.
Does that mean more words is all? Words are important.
I have a question.
It's going to be signed city council.
Is it limited to two?
I believe it's limited to two, but we will double-check and bring back that information.
And that would be a decision of a campaign committee or who?
I didn't even know you had to sign. It has to be a campaign committee. It is written into the actions before you as to authorizing the mayor, in this case, to sign the arguments on behalf of the measure. You know, if we want to, we, we can come back to the next, is it in the ordinance, Chick?
We could, we could come back on June, July 30 and have that question answered.
Yeah, I, if it's in the ordinance.
The ordinance itself has to have a signature? I mean, I get the pros and cons aspect.
It is in the ordinance that the mayor is authorized but not required to act as an author of any ballot argument in support of the ballot measure.
Right. Chick, do you know offhand?
Comments, we can be as long as we want.
The election rules on how many.
And also who.
Sign, I should have looked at that.
Arguments, is it written, is that an official act of the city? Is that done by a campaign committee or what?
Just going to introduce Chick Adams from Jones Hall, our bond counsel.
Hello, yes, that is governed, it's governed by the elections code. I don't have it off the top of my head. There is a limit on the number of people who can sign.
Yes.
We do, in the ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign it. That does not mean the mayor has to sign it. It does not mean the mayor is the only one who can sign it. It's the sort of decision that's made in the course of the campaign.
Right. Is that an argument or is that the measure itself?
There's an argument, no, the measure itself is the 75-word measure. It's actually in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance and it's specified in Section 2, if you have that. It's, it's limited to 75 words. It's not signed. It's the, it's the actual measure that appears on the ballot when you go in and decide to vote yes or no.
Something that's come up before in the subcommittee is where exactly is the line as to where, as to when the campaign starts and the city's involvement ends?
Ends, well, the city can continue in a neutral.
Correct.
Manner to provide facts, to provide information and to educate, but they cannot advocate, and that will, you know, that line comes down on July 30 if and when you enact this ordinance and pass the resolution to place this measure on the ballot. At that point, we've crossed the river, and you have an active measure that's going on in election ballot, and the city cannot spend public resources to advocate. However, there are things you can do. You are able to pass a resolution as, as to why you support, you could make public statements as to why you support this. You can.
Do we have to worry about the Brown Act after that, if we're meeting outside the building?
Well, whatever happens in a campaign is off-city time and is not done with city resources.
But we're worried, I mean.
And there's no Brown Act applicable. It's not a public meeting, and you're not acting as a legislative body.
Right, so we, uh-oh.
Five signatures, so it's, so.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Jarrett.
There you go.
So all five council members would be able to sign the argument for, and then you would also be able to sign the rebuttal argument against whoever presents an argument against.
That's great.
If you understand, there's, we're trying to show community coe-.
Cohesiveness?
Cohesiveness, there we go. It's getting late.
I know.
Cohesiveness, that's one way to do it.
Yes.
Okay, you can do five.
I think that's good.
Okay.
I, I will say for the public who's heard me complaining, I appreciate Group Four, I appreciate the new set of sort of design categories, so I thank you for doing that. And staff, who've been working on that.
And I think we, as a council, really want to thank the public for being an active participant in this whole process, and we are going to be relying on you as this process moves forward, as the entire council. Hopefully, we can get this to the next level, where we can all really educate, I think Ms. Schneider put it, the, the public to all the wonderful aspects and opportunities that this restoration of the recreation center can bring to the community. It's very exciting to hear that the public is really interested, and I, I think we owe a lot of that to Group Four, for their community outreach in getting a positive response. So Ms. Schneider has made a motion.
I was feeling.
That, did you not want to?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, then let legal counsel spell it out.
Did you want to?
No, 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 that's perfectly fine.
So, on this ordinance, if I'm hearing correctly, and I, I don't know if we have consensus, we are authorizing the entire council to sign the arguments, not just.
No, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Well.
I mean, well, I mean, I'm sure the council wants to see the argument.
Yeah.
You know, but.
I, I just have slight concerns about the, and I think this is more of a political question than a council decision question, but I think in terms of presenting the argument to the public, it should have a variety of people besides only council members, and.
Well, you know, I, I think it.
Just to show broad community support.
Doesn't that go in the argument, though, for?
Yeah, I think, because, I'll just say, being a candidate back when, you can put in there who's supporting it without actually having other people sign it. So I agree with Ms. Schneider, it'd be a good idea to show unity on the signings, but we can list a whole bunch of people within the argument as supporters.
Okay.
I think that, that would cover.
Apple Park and Rec Commissioners, other commissioners, community leaders, et cetera.
Right, and I guess one other option would be, since there's, I think, five signatures for the argument and five signatures for the rebuttal, there could be different people, mixed, different combinations of people, so it's not all five council members for both, but that's, that's.
That's kind of interesting.
I think we should leave that up to the.
I, I agree, I don't know if that should be a decision of the council.
But I think we're heading in the right direction.
If I could make a suggestion, why don't we modify the ordinance to provide that you're all authorized to sign it? That does not mean you have to sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then that decision is typically made by the campaign committee.
Perfect.
So this is Section 10 of, of the ordinance. I just want to make sure you're introducing it in, in a fashion that you can all agree. So this says, the mayor is hereby authorized, but is not required to act as the author of any ballot argument in support. So why don't we say, all five members of the council are hereby authorized, but not required to act as authors and to sign the ballot measure.
Assuming all five of us vote for this.
Well, we're hopeful. You've made the motion, Ms. Schneider. Will you accept that change?
Okay.
In the language?
Yes.
And Ms. Oliva, the second? Okay, council, are we ready for a vote? I think so. Your votes, please. Yay.
The council unanimously voted to waive the first reading and introduce a ordinance ordering submission of a proposed adoption of a resolution determining public interest and necessary demands, the restoration of Milbury Recreation Center, introduction of an ordinance ordering submission of a proposition of incurring bonded debt to the qualified voters of City of Milbury at the general municipal election to be held on November 6 for the purpose of financing the restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center, to include authorization of all five members of the city council to sign the ballot, ballot argument.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank, it's very exciting.
And when it comes back at your continued meeting on July 30, you will also consider the resolution that's in your pack.
And Austin gets to go home.
I'm, I'm sorry, there is a resolution this evening.
Before council comments, gosh.
The resolution next week is a different resolution. This evening's resolution is a resolution of public interest and necessity.
Oh, if that has to be passed tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we just passed something, we need something again?
We need to pass another thing. You have a resolution in your packet determining the public interest and necessity demands the restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center and its financing through the issuance of general obligation bond. So that needs to go tonight, huh?
Yeah, if I could just explain, we're functioning under some very old provisions of the government code. It is a requirement, before you adopt the ordinance, which you'll do next week, that you first adopt a resolution making certain findings, one of which is that they're public necessity demands, that you put this on the ballot.
So what did we just do?
You just introduced the ordinance.
Okay.
That'll be formally adopted at your next meeting.
Is the council okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, man.
So next time, Chick, they would also pass a resolution requesting the county to consolidate the elections?
Exactly.
Okay, so you will have a resolution that was in my head to enact next time, when you enact the ordinance as well. But tonight, we do this resolution.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Your votes, please. Everybody? Yay. Okay, now I'm going to ask everyone, staff-wise, because we're on a very tight schedule, is there anything else that we need to pass in order to get this going?
Not tonight.
You sure? Because we can't afford to miss any.
I am absolutely sure.
Okay, all right, thank you, everybody, that's wonderful.
But I.
Don't be wrong.
You want to announce, it was just a.
Oh, announce the vote on the last thing, okay, there you go.
The city council unanimously voted to introduce a ordinance ordering submission of a proposition, a resolution determining public interest and necessary demand that the restoration, the restoration of Milbury Recreation Center and introduction of a ordinance ordering the submission of a proposition of incurring bonded debt to qualified voters of City of Milbury at the general municipal election to be held on November 6, 2018, for the purpose of financing and restoration of the Milbury Recreation Center. Is also to include all members?
Yeah, all, all members, yes.
Okay, to also include authorization of all mem, all five members of the councils assigned the ballot argument. Thank you.
Passed unanimously.
Passed unanimously.
There you go. All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're going to move on to council comments. We will be closing tonight in memory of Long Term Resident Malcolm Barnett and Fiona Ma's mother, Sophia. So who would like to start? Any volunteers? Ms. Oliva, there you go.
Okay, I'll start. So the Milbury Senior Advisory Committee have, they voted and put, again, Marlene McBride as their chair and Rochelle Mullin as their vice. It's, they are working on their work plan, so that'll be up for discussion, and they reviewed all the council goals and looking for their work plan to be in place and bring, bring in front of the council probably within the next month. And then I just wanted to share a lovely little picture of the Rotary Park that I got.
There you go.
From, your arm is in there, Anne, sorry. But that was a really fun event on Sunday morning, and thank you, guys, all for being there. It was a lot of good job Rotary.
Mm-hmm.
And MEF.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Schneider?
Sure. So on, on the good news, for anybody still watching this late, Milbury Lions have their big car show called Milbury Machines on Saturday, August 18. This is one of the major revenue generators for the Lions, which they then give back to the community. But please come on down, please put it on your calendar. The Leos have a lemonade stand, and this year, trying to make it more family-oriented, the Leos are also going to have a face painting booth. There's also a raffle, and all of the merchants with their food on there. I'd like to give a shout-out, for those of you who don't read the consent calendar, tonight we approve going forward with the utility box painting project.
Council, can you quiet, please? Council? Can you guys be quiet?
The utility box painting project, but I want to give a shout-out to the Leos because they helped Public Works Department, you haven't gotten it yet, but they went out and surveyed the entire city looking for utility boxes and have mapped it, and we are turning that, we, the Leos are turning that over through Cultural Arts to staff so that we now have a list of potential murals that can be painted throughout the City of Milbury in time. I attended an event that Assemblyman Kevin Mullin hosted for elected officials and the faith community regarding the current actions happening with immigration and the separation of family members. And the, the outcome was to talk, to try to get elected officials and the faith community talking about what we might be able to do. There is now a list of activities that could happen. I meant to bring the poster and the business cards, but there is a group called Faith in Action. They have a phone number, and they have business cards that, if you have friends or family who may be worried about immigration action by the federal government, it tells you what your rights are and are not. And I don't know how I can get that to staff, I don't know if we can post this, but it's basically a card to say, if you get that knock at the door, here's what you can do. And Assemblyman Mullin is going to host a follow-up discussion in the fall with this. It was, it was a really heartwarming and heartbreaking meeting to hear the stories of some of our people who have been separated locally, and this was leading into a county action that was postponed today, but the Samhitael County is planning on setting some money aside for legal representation for people who have had family separation. The other thing that I learned at that meeting, because I sat with the Vice Mayor of East Palo Alto, is they've recently passed an ordinance for sleeping in your car. This is, again, another ordinance directed at people who are homeless, and this can include children who are homeless and sleeping in their cars. So once we start looking at more housing, or maybe when we look at the general plan, there's a, a series of actions to look at. there's a series of actions to look at the homeless situation. Finally, with that, oh, I want to give a shout-out, we still have our park and rec staff here in the audience. It was an amazing Zootopia night last Friday. For families, there were so many families. There was, as the interim city manager said, it was fun. It was the perfect night. The weather was perfect, the movie was perfect, the sound was perfect, the entertainment, the library brought these blocks that kids played with for hours. It was just truly an amazing community event. For anybody who missed it, try to make the next one, and I don't know what the movie is for the next one.
Cars.
Oh, it's Cars. Anyway, just truly fun, and I ate at my first food truck in Millbury, and I had the deconstructed, oh, gosh, I'm forgetting the word, samosa. And, oh my gosh, to die for great food. So bring some money, eat the food down there, have a great picnic. Finally, we're coming into the heat, hot season. Another thing that the community center will be is a cooling center, but we have the car show coming up. Three years ago, it was horribly hot. No cooling center, although we were serving lemonade and water. Good for sales, not good for people. But the Art and Wine Festival is coming, and I talked to Chief Zamora. I think I've sent you a memo on that. I just want to make sure that as we come into these outdoor activities during the heat season, that we are all prepared for a cooling station, whether that means that CERT has extra preparations, just that we're thinking about that. We, last fourth, last first day of the Art and Wine Festival was 104 degrees, and it was horrible. It was absolutely, there was hardly anybody downtown, there were no kids playing on the rides, merchants lost money, the chamber lost money. But at least we can have a cooling center should it happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you. So, very happy to welcome another new business on Thursday, 5:30 at 128 Park. We're going to cut the ribbon for seriously addictive mathematics. So, yeah, Sam?
Terrible addiction.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, we, some of our kids had that addiction, right? And, yeah, I also want to reiterate my sincere thanks to McKinsey, Brady, and Rob Decote for putting together the movie nights, it's going to be every month, and it's going to be current-run movies, so they're not going to be old movies, they're going to be currently running or just out of the theater type of running. And they'll continue to build on it. And the Lions Club put out, paid for the screen, so thank you to Lions Club. And, yeah, I just can't say enough about that. Thank you.
And I don't know who ordered the weather, but we, that was just the most, because Ms. Schneider said, the most beautiful night in Millbury. No wind.
Just make sure that the generator's all filled up next time. It's a slight glitch.
Oops.
Oops. Okay. So, I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week, and there was a discussion about the sale of Schultz Park, potential, potential sale of Schultz Park. There were some neighbors there who were a bit concerned, and, you know, as we spoke through it, some of the concerns were alleviated, but I think they will certainly not go away entirely, and I'm sure there's several people in that area who are unaware of the issue, and once it comes to their attention, will have concerns about it. So, whatever does or doesn't happen there, we need to make sure that we have thorough community outreach, and from what I've heard, it's possible that we may not need to sell it. But, but it's, it's certainly an option to help fill the funding gap for the new recreation centers that we could begin construction next summer. I also attended the Sisters Cities Commission meeting this week, and they are beginning to plan a group visit to most of Malta and visit throughout Malta as well, maybe even go to Sicily for a day or two. There are a few members of the commission who are interested, and then it looks like we're also opening it up to other members of the community who would be interested in going. The timing is not, has not been determined yet, but I think they're looking right now at April of 2019, before the current president is out of office, because she has welcomed us over there. But, and also, at this time, the cost is, is not known, unknown, but individuals would be paying out of pocket to go. If you are interested, anybody interested in going, please feel free to contact the commission chair, Robert Gottschuk, or the consul general of Malta, Louis Vella. They are working on it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. First off, the Lions Club baseball, Little League, is having a tournament this week, and I also want to compliment them on their international relations. Last weekend, they had a Taiwanese Little League team that came over. This was really put together very quickly, but just a wonderful event with all the parents, both, the kids from Taiwan landed that morning and they were playing, and I do think they won. But it's a great way to build relationships in this day and time, so we hope that was the beginning of many future events for our Little League team, and you'll see that the parks are going to be full. I think the tournament is going on for a whole nother day. I know they were playing at Green Hills and Taylor Field, so go on out and watch them. They were loading up the snack bars, too, so that was great. Again, thank you to staff, also to Group Four, for the movies in the park and the popcorn that was provided and everything there. I think we're really getting it all together for wonderful community events. Another community event that's coming up is the National Night Out, where the Sheriff's Department will be showing cocoa on August 7th, between seven, or 6:00 and 8:00 PM is the community festival, the movie's between 8:00 and 11:00, and that is also in the Millbury Central Park. We have Relay for Life coming up in September, so we'll be looking for that one as well. I will remind my colleagues, we all have FPPC filings before the end of the July 31st. If you haven't gotten yours in yet, please do so. And I would, which was mentioned, Schultz Park. The moment we get the information, I will say that we'll be having, hopefully we can get the whole council together, a public hearing so that we can keep the public informed here. Also, issues that are being discussed currently. I'm hoping that we can have a public forum regarding the cell towers. There are some big issues that are in our community right now that we really need to reach out to the residents, so we will keep the entire council here informed, and hopefully we can get those things together. I think that is it on my list here. And, again, we will be closing tonight in memory of Mal Barnett, longtime Millbury resident. Our condolences go to his high school sweetheart and wife, Rose, three daughters, Adrienne, Erin and Jennifer, spouses, many, many grandchildren, and I think our soon-to-be state treasurer, Fiona Ma, her mother, Sophia, passed away. So, if we can get letters of condolences out there. Thank you very much, everyone, for your hard work and efforts. Greatly appreciated. Have a good evening, drive safely.